I'm going to call the school committee back to order at 7:01 PM. And I'm going to read the chair comment again. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the governor of Massachusetts dated March 12th, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. I know we have Harbor Media recording here tonight. Or is there anyone else who is recording the meeting? If so, could you click on the participants button at the bottom of the screen and then use the raise hand function at the far right and just let us know? Okay, seeing no one, we will move on to item four, which is the approval of minutes. The first is the minutes of the school committee meeting held on December 7th, 2020. Would somebody like to make a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on December 7th, 2020.
Thanks, Carlos. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Jen. Okay, roll call vote. Michelle?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Ness?
Hi.
Carlos?
Hi.
Libby?
Hi.
And Liza?
Hi.
Thank you. Next is the minutes of the school committee meeting held on December 16th, 2020.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on December 16th, 2020.
Do a second?
Second.
Thanks, Michelle. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Michelle?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Ness?
Hi.
Carlos?
Hi.
Libby?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Thank you, everyone. Number five is questions and comments. The Hingham School Committee encourages community engagement and welcomes questions and comments as agenda items are discussed at the meeting. In addition, we have set aside up to 15 minutes at the beginning of the meeting for comments or questions that fall under the purview of the school committee and are not already on tonight's agenda. If any guests wish to speak, please go to the bottom to the participants button to the far right and click raise hand. And when acknowledged by the chair, state your name and address and address your comments to the chairperson. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker and must relate to topics within the scope of responsibility of the school committee. As established by Massachusetts general laws, the responsibilities of the school committee are to, one, select and to evaluate the superintendent; two, review and approve budgets for public education in the district; and three, establish educational goals and policies for the schools in the district. Speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner and to consider the privacy interests of others. The public comment period is not a time for debate or response to the comments by the school committee. The school committee is not adopting or endorsing any of the comments made during the public comment period. So with all of that being said, does anyone have a comment or question for public comment? If you do, again, if you can click on the participants button at the bottom of the screen and then use the raise hand. Okay, seeing none, we'll go on to number six, which is new business, to discuss a memorandum of agreement with HEA Unit A and act as appropriate. Liza has been kind enough, in addition to the many, many hours of work she put in, says the Chair of Salary Negotiations, has put together a PowerPoint describing the MOA and how it relates to the school reopening plan that she and Dr. Austin will present. So the way we're planning to do that, Dr. Austin will also be presenting more details about the school reopening plan during the superintendent's update. So what we're going to do is have Liza and Dr. Austin go through the MOA presentation, then the committee will vote on the MOA. And during, if anyone has any comments or questions, I know a lot of people are here to hear about the next steps for in-person learning, we can address those during the superintendent's report. So with that, Liza and Paul, if you can take it away.
Okay. Julie, you want to share the screen? Thank you. So we wanted to do a little bit more of a presentation on this than we have in the past, just to share, we heard from the community, some more transparency about the steps that we went through to come up with this agreement. And this is, so the presentation tonight, we're first going to take you through what we focused on in going into this update to the memorandum of agreement, the process that we went through, our focus on students, the safety protocols that have been enhanced through this agreement, and then the timelines of execution, and then just some references and resources so you can have a sense of the type of research that we did and the issues we paid attention to going through this whole process. So next slide. So our focus in this is first and foremost on our students and the learning that they're receiving, both in person and remotely, and what's best for them. Also, their social emotional health and how important it is for them to be with their classmates and with their teachers. We looked at elementary learners and secondary learners, specifically, both of them together. Then we spent a lot of time looking at safety and making sure that our community is safe during this pandemic, specifically for teachers and for other staff as well, our nurses, paraprofessionals, others in the building, what's safe for students, and then also how families and our whole community need to be safe in order for this plan to work. We also had to keep in mind the resources that we had to execute this plan and all of the regulations that we must follow, the DESE regulations regarding six-foot spacing and buses and all those other types of things to have students come back more in person. This space that we have in our own buildings was a major component of how do we get more students back in person. And as you're aware, we've secured the St. Jerome's Building in order to help with the challenges at Foster School. And then also the staffing that we have and the staffing that we would need to supplement in order to execute this. And then we did look at budgets. Fortunately, the Board of Selectmen has been working with us to provide us some additional resources, but we also had to look at the reality of what our budgets are as well. So next slide. So going through the process, this reconsideration for more in-person learning began with the October 19th school committee meeting presentation that Dr. Austin made. And the plan at the time was for considering kindergarten through second grade, trying to bring them back on or about January 4th. Kindergarten, the focus was on five part days per week, or five days per week, the timing that they're on now. And then grades one and two, to bring them in full, five full days. And that would require the reduction of six feet distancing down to three feet distancing. We'd communicated to everyone that this would be subject to health metrics and also the collective bargaining with HEA, which we've gone through. We also had to look at transportation, the space in our buildings, and the addition of remote teachers to execute this plan for our remote-only learners. So the negotiations with the HEA, we had nine collaborative productive meetings that started October 27th and concluded December 17th. The Hingham Public School side spent, we tallied it up to 55 hours working on this plan, and I'm sure that the HEA side had their own large number of hours added on to their regular teaching day as well. There were 13 people in total involved with this whole negotiating process, two school committee members, myself and Michelle Eyre, four Hingham Public School staff, and then on the teacher's side, there were six HEA teachers at all levels. And then the Hingham Public Schools had their legal counsel and the teachers had their MTA representative as well. Throughout this process, the health metrics in town were continuously monitored by our COVID response team and communicated to us. And during this time period, Hingham did go from green on the map to yellow. So the positivity rates were below 2%, measuring back to October 20th, and up to December 9th, they were up to 5.25%. We did have to take this into consideration throughout the discussions with the HEA, and we acknowledged that this was a concern. Also, the average daily incident rate went from 9.9, October 20th, up to 31.2. Okay, next slide. Julie, next slide? Thank you. In addition, we were also paying attention to what was going on in other districts throughout the state, their timing for adding more in-person learning for their students, but also we're looking at why districts were pausing for moving ahead with more in-person learning. And then also looking at the reasons that districts were transitioning back to remote-only instruction, whether it was for one building for two weeks at a time or for an entire district for longer periods of time. We also faced changes in CDC and state guidance during this whole time period. The CDC changed how you measure a close contact from measuring 15 minutes of time with a person to 15 minutes throughout the day that you were in contact with that person. Also, the state changed the color coding on the map of, you know, the gray, green, yellow, red, came out with new metrics during this time period. So with all of this, we had to balance all the issues in front of us. We listened carefully to the staff and what their feedback was. We also listened carefully to the community and had to put all of these issues together and balance all these multiple issues. I can say we had very collaborative conversations with the HEA, and we talked through the issues to make sure that we came up with balanced outcomes that were truly in the best interest of the children and the Hingham Public School community. Okay, next. So a key component of this, we also during this time secured St. Jerome's School. As many of you know, Foster had its challenges. Eight classrooms were deemed less than ideal for students due to a lack of direct outside air for proper ventilation, and the cafeteria, gym, and multipurpose room and other space were being used for classrooms because of this. The St. Jerome's School became an opportunity to provide nine classrooms, gym, and other breakout spaces, which will become Foster North, just a short drive from our current Foster School. And there are furniture and furnishings in place that we can use, and the building is in good condition. The contract was signed for this lease December 15th. The Board of Selectmen approved it, and on December 16th, the school committee approved it. The next day, December 17th, the keys were picked up, and Hingham Public School staff started preparing the building for our students to be able to come in. Next. So now Dr. Austin is going to take you through the student aspect of this memorandum of agreement.
Thank you, Liza. Thank you for all your work, and happy holidays, everyone. And I'm going to do this briefly because I have another presentation afterwards, which I'm going to talk a little bit more about the implementation of what we're going to do in this school. So I'm going to do this briefly for people. But first, at the elementary level, so beginning on January 11th, kindergarten, January 11th, all kindergarten students will be in five days per week, in person, four hours per day. So that begins on January 11th. That will require that we are five, six feet apart, that, so for the most part, almost all of our classrooms can fit our students because our enrollment is low right now. I add six feet, there are a couple that are just over five feet. And so that we can guarantee there'll be five to six feet apart. We've gone out and got new desks to replace the tables in the classrooms to give people more space so we can do that a little better. And then to ensure that our remote students also have a high-quality education during this time and the time dedicated to them to look at remote-only students, have a Hingham teacher, has been part of this process. So that's going to begin on January 11th. Also on January 11th, for grades one and two, the students in grades one and two, all students across the district, grades one and two on January 11th, will start to come in on Wednesdays for alternating cohorts in person, four hours a day. This is still going to be a six feet. So basically cohort A will say it'll start on January 11th and go three days in person. B will be two, the next week, A will be in two, and B will be in three. And so we will do that to start on January 11th, starting on Wednesdays. It is our hope that by February 1st, that we are able to bring in grades one and two, along with kindergarten, five days a week in person for that four hours per day. This will require that we go to three to six-foot distancing, but it's also going to require that we have health metrics. People have asked for, what are the metrics? What do we need for us to be able to move forward? We're going to need the district to be in either gray or green for three consecutive weeks, and we need to make sure that we have no in-school transmission. So we now have the target. The target is set, it's clear, we need to have three weeks, and hopefully we can do that, starting January 11th. We need to start on that day, three weeks of green or gray for three weeks in a row, and we can bring in our first and second graders for five days a week. Also, on February 1st, if we can get that, three weeks of gray and green, we also want to bring in at that time our three to five, grades three to five students for alternating Wednesdays. Once again, that's alternating Wednesdays, four days a week, as we did on the 11th, first and second graders. So three to five, grades three to five, bringing them Wednesdays, the alternating weeks, still at six feet distancing. And then we will start our clock again for the three consecutive weeks of green or gray. So now that we've added more students into the classroom, more people into the buildings for longer periods of time, we want to keep our gray-green transmission low, et cetera. And if we can do that, on March 1st, we'll bring in grades three to five, five days a week, in person, four hours per day, three to six feet of distancing. So very, very exciting, but it's a challenge, there's no question about that. But we have set the targets now, we've set the dates, we know how to get there. Next slide. So on February 1st, now this is St. Jerome's itself. On February 1st, we plan to fully open St. Jerome's. We don't need St. Jerome's to be fully open to begin on January 11th, where we're bringing all the kindergarten in, and then grades one and two on alternating Wednesdays. However, to be able to bring in all of one and two for five days a week, we do need St. Jerome's, so we need to have that building up and running on February 1st. We will do that. In the time between now and then, deep planning of St. Jerome's, we have the furniture and building setup that we're working on. There is a lot of furniture already at St. Jerome's, so we're excited about that, the setup of the school, but there's still some things that we need to bring over for our own furniture as well as teaching materials. We need to install certain technology to make sure this is compatible with all of our HPS systems, what we're expecting in our schools. Foster teachers in grade one and two will be moving over during that time to St. Jerome's, so we need to pack and move classroom materials. We need to set up our new classrooms, and we need to continue instruction prior to that move. So we're going to be doing lots of things at the same time without disruption of education and getting ready for St. Jerome's and moving into that space. But there's a lot of things that have happened at St. Jerome's. One is getting administrative staff in place to do that, to have a principal on site, that'll either be me or shared by myself. Dr. Lubilaw will be tearing some of that duty, and most likely Dr. Viness from our central office team will be taking rotations into St. Jerome's. And we're quite excited about that, actually, to get into schools and St. Jerome's, spending some time there. We also have to have a full-time nurse that we're working on, custodial services, office support, everything you need in order to run a school, and we're got a very short period of time to do that, particularly with the holiday in the middle. So we're working hard to get that done. And then, of course, working on our specialist and special education services, getting them scheduled, giving the rotation to make sure that we can offer the full array of services in the, to that St. Jerome's School. Now, one of the things we didn't talk about on the October time was moving into secondary because we made it very clear we were going to focus on K2. So not only did we focus on K2, but we've talked a little bit about three, four, and five today. I also want to talk a little bit about secondary, middle school, and high school level. On January 11th, we've also heard people that there are classroom, there is classroom space available in places. So if we have availability of classroom space where we're not filled up to the six-foot capacity or distancing capacity, the principal will work collaboratively with teachers to begin to fill that space. We're going to prioritize our more higher-risk population, the students with special education needs, students with 504 plans, students maybe homeless, foster students, English-language learners, students who have dropped a grade letter or more between terms, and students who have been identified with social-emotional concerns. Obviously, we want to fully utilize our space, and we appreciate our teachers' flexibility with this to bring more students in. So that was a really big part of our negotiations, and we're really appreciative to be able to offer that at a secondary level. This will begin on, as I said, January 11th. It's going to be for return to in-person learning on Mondays, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. Of course, we'll continue at this point with Wednesdays being fully remote at this time so that all classes can be together at the same time. Class size and school enrollment, maintaining the six feet of physical distancing, will have to be continually monitored, particularly at that high school level and the middle school level, of course, to ensure safety. But to the extent possible, being able to bring as many students as possible and maintain that will be important.
Okay, I'll take it back. So safety protocols, we wanted to give you some background and some new things that we've implemented into the agreement. So as background, January 11th was identified as a date for more in-person learning because it is 10 days later than New Year's Day, which is toward the end of the vacation period. And we want to allow families to come back, and if they have gone away, and to allow that incubation period in the event that there are any cases develop over that vacation period. For, as Dr. Austin mentioned, for grades one through five to have full week in-person learning, that is dependent on the metrics that we've identified of our community being in the gray or green on the map for three weeks, three consecutive weeks, as well as no in-school transmission happening. The reason for the phase-in of the students in, from kindergarten through five, is because as we add more people into the buildings, that it's just more people that potentially could be available around, and we don't want it spreading. And we also have been taking a conservative approach, which has worked well for our community in keeping our students in-person learning, and we want to continue with that to make sure that all the operations run smoothly as we bring more students in. We have started equipping all the elementary classrooms with air purifiers because there'll be additional people in those classrooms. And also, we have agreement with that our Hingham School nurses are going to be implementing some additional programs and compensated for that. Weekly testing, PCR testing will be provided to our staff, and we're going to begin with the elementary staff, starting the week of January 4th. And then as that program gets up and running and operating smoothly, then we will be adding in the secondary staff and additional Hingham Public School staff as well. And our school nurses are also helping us with conducting some additional contact tracing to support Hingham Public School cases. We know that the town department of health and the state's contact tracing programs are extremely busy and are not necessarily getting to all of the cases. So we're fortunate that our school nurses are going to assist with this so that we can address anyone in our community that had a case or potentially other people that need to be notified. Okay, next. Two additional items in the agreement. The Hingham Public School staff and the HEA are going to meet at least twice a month, so more regularly, to continue to collaborate and address any issues, and also look at any opportunities to improve the operations and what's in the best interest of our students. And also, the COVID-19 exposure procedure that's outlined in the agreement will be reviewed at every COVID response team meeting for accuracy because we've experienced many guidelines from the federal, state, and local levels have evolved as we go through this pandemic, and we want to keep that procedure up to date. Okay, next. So Dr. Austin's going to go over the timeline in the agreement?
Yeah, thanks again. So just to run through this real quick again and give people that timeline, December 17th, we secured St. Jerome's. And the week of the 4th, we're going to start our elementary testing program. We're working on that very hard now. We'll have the air purifiers in all of our classrooms elementary-wise so we can prepare to increase our population. On January 11th, we're very excited to see our kindergarten is five days a week, and that our grade one and two will alternate cohorts on Wednesdays. And at the same time, on January 11th, middle school to high school, higher-risk students moving to more in-person time. So we're very excited about January 11th and that timeline frame coming up. On February 1, we're going to call it Foster North will reopen for the first time, and we're excited about St. Jerome's and the opportunity that gives us. It's a challenge, opening a building in the start of the year, one that doesn't belong to us, but I want to thank John Ferris, all of the maintenance and facilities folks and the work they're doing right now. Phenomenal job. Katie Hartman, your team, Doug Foley, everyone who's working so hard, thank you so much. That begins on February 1st, where we hope that we've had three weeks of green or gray, and that we're able to move into grades one and two, five days a week at that time. And then at the same time on February 1st, assuming we've been able to be gray or green, bringing our grades three to five cohorts on alternating Wednesdays. And then, of course, February, March 1st is the next important date where we bring grades three to five, five days a week at that time, if possible, with the gray or green and no transmission in the school. So very busy spring ahead. As I said, we have the targets, we know where we're going, just have to get there now.
Okay, next. Now, I want, I called this resources, but we just wanted to share with you that we read everything we possibly can, and we stay up to date on everything COVID. It's a little overwhelming, I feel a little nerdy at times. But just as reference, you know, why three feet of social distancing should be enough in schools was an op-ed in the Washington Post from November 12th. But it did say in the article that it's a benefit so long as the baseline risk is low enough, and that also where community spread is low, then three feet of physical distancing should suffice. That's what we have in this plan. When our community spread is low at the gray or green metrics, that's when we can go bring students in at the three feet of physical distancing. We also looked at, you know, in South Hadley, they had to go back to remote learning because they had a high number of staff that were out because they needed to quarantine. So it's not just about keeping in-person learning because of, you know, the students, it's also the staff, and we need to make sure we have enough staff, and that relates to having our community spread as low to keep those staff in the building to teach our students. We've also heard from several parents about, you know, what are everybody else doing? Everybody else is moving back in person. Well, we also know that, you know, Braintree had to announce last week that they're shifting their plans. They have to pull back because of the rates in their community. We're hoping our rates go low and we can keep moving forward. We've also heard concerns from parents about, oh, many kids are going to private schools, and the private schools are having opportunities. Well, this week in Brookline, the Health Department announced that they're going to be now looking at their private schools and what, and for the private schools to have to follow DESE regulations as well because of the rates. So that's just a sample of some of the school media that we follow, and we're trying to keep up on what other districts are doing and other communities are doing. and we're trying to keep up on what other districts are doing and other communities are doing. Um also, we've heard from parents about the concern for social emotional support. And later tonight, uh Heather Rodriguez is going to do a presentation on what we've been doing in our schools. But I also wanted to just inform people about Hingham Cares, which is a local organization that um provides social emotional support programs. And they recently got a grant from the federal government to continue their work. And also, they've posted a series on their Facebook page of activities for parents to address wellness and wanted just to do a shout out to them to take a look at that um because it's a very good resource and opportunity for parents to help deal with this difficult time. Okay, next. Uh and also, just something that was posted in Edweek this week. Um I read Edweek regularly to see what's happening nationwide with this crazy year that we're going through. And they asked readers to summarize in their, this most infuriating, frightening, depressing year in recent memory of how to describe it. Um we all have all these emotions. I'm not gonna read them. Um but this is happening all across our state, all across our country. Um from students, from staff, from, you know, these quotes are from teachers, from principals, from a student. Um and as the last one said, we're all doing the best we can. And we think we made a lot of progress with this agreement. And we look forward to working closer with our teachers. Um next slide. And I'll just sum up that for all this progress, we as a community, um our students, our families, our teachers, uh the school committee, the administration, everyone, we need to all come together as one Hingham in twenty twenty-one for this plan to happen. And we felt very good about these negotiations. We felt very good about our collaborative discussions and addressing the many issues that both sides looked at. And we came together to do what was in the best interest of students. And I'm gonna just make a shout out to everyone on this call that for this to happen, we all need to make this happen. This is not just one group, one person, but we all need to focus on this to have it happen. And I hope that we can all come together and get into that gray and green metric and get our students back into the buildings and get them all together and with their teachers because that's what it's all about. So um on that, I'm gonna make a motion um to uh approve the updated memorandum of agreement with the HEA Unit A for the reopening of schools for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Liza.
I will second.
Thank you, Michelle. And thank you all for all your work on this. Is there any discussion from the committee? Okay, seeing none, we will do a roll call. Oh, sorry, Carlos?
I just want to echo what my colleagues already said. Uh congratulate, congratulate the team, uh both parties, uh the, the teachers, negotiating team, and our administrators, Liza, Michelle. Uh thank you very much for a job well done. Uh and uh great slogan to finish uh the presentation. One in twenty-one. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, and I just, I also want to thank Liza for putting that together. I think sometimes on, we on the committee get stuck in the weeds with our subcommittee work and our individual resource and uh research. And it's nice, it's, I think it's really helpful that you're able to take a step back and kind of explain the process and the thinking to everyone. So with that being said, uh we'll do a roll call vote. Uh Michelle?
I.
Jen?
Hi.
Ness?
Hi.
Carlos?
Hi.
Libby?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. So the agreement is adopted. Um number seven is the superintendent's report. Dr. Austin?
Take myself off mute before somebody says you're on mute. I think that's the word for twenty twenty. Once again, hello, everyone. Happy holidays. Um lots of information to go through tonight. Um one, just to, I'll take the uh time to bring your attention to South Shore Education Collaborative. Uh information that's in your package, the school committee. Um basically, the budget projection sheet and the program enrollment um for the board of directors uh meeting on December fourth uh is attached to your um your uh information tonight. Uh the enrollment projections and the budget projections for the fiscal year are in line um with the projected budget. Uh the financial projection for April twenty-one indicates it will be a positive financial balance at the close of the school year. Uh so it's good news for South Shore Education. The uh second part of my update tonight is the update on the COVID nineteen metrics in case council, the district, and before Julie's uh sends that to a, a slide that I always do. I wanna, you know, it'll be a while before we get back to this. Um we will probably not update this uh for a couple of weeks. Uh on our, we'll do our best on the website, but it may not be updated or may have difficulty uh based on people being on uh time off right now and much-needed time off. Um but we'll do our best to try to update uh and keep you informed as much as possible, uh particularly after the January fourth time. Uh so anyway, Julie, if you'd start to the slide presentation? Thank you. Um so as always, uh we, we talk about the, the town report, on the weekly public health report. As Liza mentioned in her report, um at the time for uh December ninth, the uh prevalence rate of in the town was thirty-one point two four per hundred thousand people. Uh we are in the yellow still this last week. However, we moved up to forty point two. That's consistent across the Commonwealth as we've continued to see um that um the spread of COVID nineteen after the Thanksgiving break, uh continued to climb. Uh and uh we obviously all have a lot of work to try to get that back down. Um the test positive rate, um which is really important between taking from green to yellow to red. Um the test positive rate for this last week has moved from three point three two to four point two six percent. If it goes above five percent, we will be in the red and hang on. So obviously, uh we want to keep that below five percent uh and we need to get our numbers down. In the uh school district itself, um this last week, again, from twelve twelve to twelve nineteen, we moved up another twelve cases overall, um from fifty-five to sixty-seven. Um however, that is a decrease over the weekly. Uh where last week, the week prior to that was sixteen and this week we had twelves, we had fewer cases this week. Uh and this week, we're running, I think, right now about five, uh although this will be a partial week. I do want to say, this is a good place for us to also add. Um I'll keep on going. I'll do that afterwards. I'm sorry. Go ahead. Uh and the quarantine report, um this is actually the, the least amount of in-quarantine we've had in the last three weeks. That's a positive number for us. Uh we're down to about uh sixty-one or two people in quarantine overall. Um that is uh between staff um and our students. I'll also say it's the lowest number of staff we've had in three weeks down with ten staff uh at this time in, in quarantine. Uh and so that's a, that's a very positive number for us. We're moving in the right direction. I would say it's a positive number. Certainly moving in the right direction. Uh as we've said before, uh we're in the population of the ten to fifty K. Um so in order to be green, uh we have to have uh ten or fewer cases, average cases per hundred thousand. And we have to keep our uh positivity rate below five percent. Uh that's important. Um and and certainly, that's the target we need to be shooting for over the next few weeks. Finally, what I do want to say, you can take me off, uh you can take that one off um just for a second. I, I want to give everybody an update on the Plymouth River situation as well. Uh as people know, that Plymouth River, we actually pivoted um to a uh remote learning for a period of one week. Actually started with two days and then extended that through the week. Uh the reason is that because we did have a cluster, uh we identified there when a cluster is identified is any more than two or more cases that are coming from the same location. Uh so we did identify that. I can't tell you uh or thank enough, uh Melissa Smith, Charlene Fabrizio, uh Deb Whiting uh for being incredibly uh responsive uh and doing quick action uh to bring that uh to an end quickly. We identified the cluster. We, we identified uh the close contacts of that cluster. Uh and then we closed the school, ordered DPH, uh or asked, I didn't order the DPH, nobody does. Uh maybe the governor, uh not me. Uh the Department of Public Health, we requested uh that they come and bring their rapid uh response team for testing, which they gave us um that opportunity. They tested one hundred and four um individuals, both students and staff, at the end of uh that week. I'm incredibly surprised and and happy to report, out of the one hundred and four tests, all were negative. Uh and that is just a uh complete testament to how quickly the staff responded over there and get this under control, which allowed us to reopen quickly. So um very good news for PRS. It was a great uh exercise for us to go um through what happens when there's a cluster so we can respond. Uh the things that we put in place worked really, really well. Uh and I'm really proud of that staff and that students and that uh the leadership over at PRS. Uh and of course, the parents and the students. So thanks for a job well done on that. That's the update on the, the COVID nineteen metrics.
Great. Thank you. Um does anyone on the committee have any questions about that? No, I'd just like to reiterate the job well done on the PRS situation that it could have, it could have been worse, you know? It was handled really well. Okay.
I have a question.
Libby?
Yeah, uh so I'm curious. I haven't heard um how much time went into the contact tracing to figure that out and who all was involved in that? I mean, it must have been a huge effort.
Yeah, that, that's a really good question. And one of the things that we do really well, and I'm glad that you brought that up, Libby. Um one of the things that we do really well, if we were to do a standard model. So the way that things happen, when people test and a test result becomes positive, some, that lab that gives you the positive result then reports that to the Department of Public Health. The Department of Public Health, that's get put into what they call the Maven system. And Mavens allows the local boards of health to know who's testing positive. That can take several days so that by the time that the board of health at the local level hears about that, it could be three or four days down the road. And so that's when they would typically do um from the town side, their contact tracing. Um and for town of Hingham and many towns across the Commonwealth, who've become incredibly overwhelmed with the amount of testing, they've had to put that back on the state. And so then the state could take their time in doing contact tracing, which could take several more days. One of the things that our folks have been incredibly, and they've all, I mean, they've, they've done this on their own. They haven't. You know, they, they're doing this out of the goodness of their heart and thinking about what is in our best interest for our students or our, our admin- administrators, our nurses, our staff are all being very vigilant on this. So when a parent, when a parent gets a positive um case, they tell us immediately. They call us almost immediately. They call our nurses, they call our principals. That immediately triggers us to think, okay, where have they been? What classroom were they in? Where did they visit? What bus are they on? What are the close, are there any close contacts? Was there any time that somebody was more than six feet? Do they hit that standard? So they can do that very, very quickly. Their quick action, and it does take some time, sometime more than others. Many of our cases, because we've been so vigilant, we've already had them out for a period of time. They're already on quarantine. So we've already identified, most of the cases come from a um, a secondary context somewhere outside of the school. We've talked about that before, that ninety-nine percent of what we're seeing is coming from the outside. So people have been really incredibly good about being out of school, taking those extra precautions. And then they tell us they haven't been in school for the last seven to ten days. Most of our cases get reported that way to you, so there hasn't been much work that we've had to do in that regard because most people have been out. That's probably seventy-five to eighty percent of our cases that haven't been in the schools or even more. I, and I'm taking that number off the top of my head, to be honest. So uh it could be more than that. But so most of that work have been done because of the vigilance of the community and keeping, keeping people home in the quarantine as they should, uh which is very helpful to our process. So again, our process is much faster. Um and I think because of that, we've been able to stay open and stay consistent from October until now with just that one blip at PRS.
Yeah, thank you. Um do any members of the public have any questions about the COVID numbers and the COVID update? If you do, again, hit the participants button at the bottom and then use the raise hand function. Uh Susie O'Hara?
Hi, um I have a question. Are there any other communities that are doing a similar process? Because this is the first I've heard of this. And personally, I find it to be more obstructionist to getting our kids back into school than to be helpful. The, you know, suppose all of these ca- cases are in a nursing home. In the past, what had been said was that the cases were going to be looked at individually with regards to the school. So it may not have any bearing whatsoever if we're in the yellow, if all of those cases are, say, in a nursing home or an assisted living community or, you know, someone who's not in the school system whatsoever. So to me, this doesn't make any sense again. And all I see is more excuses that are being put forward by, largely by the MTA, to keep our kids out of school. These kids belong in school. It's safe. Many communities have brought their kids back at, at distances less than six feet. And this is, you know, this is just ridiculous. These kids belong in school and to have these kind of barriers constantly be put in front of parents and in front of the kids again and again and again, six months in, is just absurd. There's no precedent for doing this.
I'm not sure what the question was. If the question was, and and Ms. Dr. O'Hara, I've been telling you since day one um that I have worked with the local board of health. We review those statistics every single week. Um we work very collaboratively with the community health and there is a very big difference between where the cases are and it makes a difference. We've watched those every single week and we will continue to watch those.
So no, my question is, what, is there other precedent? Are there other communities that are using the uh, you know, coding system that's been set up by the state to drive their school reopening process? And the second question is, is there any real validity to doing that when the cases are not necessarily in the schools?
I, I, I can't.
I'd say no.
Okay. Yeah, I, I can't speak to that exactly what other districts have done. I've paid attention to ours and uh and tried to do the best we could to, to find um a way forward because I've heard in the community multiple times, they want to know what are the metrics for us to open uh and so we worked on that to get that, so.
Um can I add, Carrie? There, there are other districts that are using positivity rates. Uh I know that Boston in particular has positivity rates in their agreement. Um so this is not unprecedented.
Yeah, there are many other communities that are using positivity rates in their agreements.
We're not Boston.
What?
We're not Boston. I mean, the, the positivity rates are very low here and the spread in the school has been very minimal. So to use community-based rates and not use the school-based rates, I think is really ridiculous. It's just, it's another excuse to keep these kids out of school, which is where they belong.
That's why we haven't shut down, but I'll, I'll leave it at that. I don't think we're, we're here to debate these things.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Uh Wendy Driscoll, could you state your name and address? Sorry.
Wendy Driscoll, twenty-four Charles Street. I guess I, I kind of feel the way that Suzie does and I'm looking at a list of sixty towns that already have their K through two open, four to five days, full days, not even half days. And that's just of what we have been able to research so far. So that's sixty schools that are already open right now and I have the town metrics. And several of them are already have been yellow, have been red, and they don't go by green and they don't go by gray. And I don't know why we would sign a contract for seventeen thousand dollars a month when we then put in a requirement that we have to be green or gray. I mean, that's just backwards. How do we expect to get in, in use St. Jerome's and get our kids in with the requirement that we have to be green or gray? When do you realistically think that we're gonna get there and why isn't yellow good enough? Why are sixty towns, K through two, full-time, four to five days a week and we're not? Dr. Austin?
I, I don't have an answer for that. I, I can't answer that. I don't know. I don't pay attention to their towns. We were negotiating this contract the best that we could over here. Um I really don't have an answer for that.
How do we expect to get the kids in, in, with that requirement of green or gray? How do you realistically expect that in January, in February? How do you expect that?
We expected, we, we said, I, I, and I won't go back. We said on October nineteenth, we were gonna focus on K two and get them in. That's exactly what we've done regardless of the metrics. We were actually adding on full-time for three, four, five and moving into other areas uh with that metrics. We were actually adding on full-time for three, four, five and moving into other areas with that metrics. And so we were not just focused on K two, but trying to put metrics, how would we get students more in-person overall? I think actually, I, I think the next few months are going to be very telling. In fact, I think the next few weeks, we have a vaccine coming. I don't know how, you know, what, what that's going to mean, but that's coming to educators in February. I think there's going to be a lot of discussion. And I can tell you this, and I know it's frustrating, I hear that. But there isn't anybody on the school committee, on the negotiating team, including the HGA, that doesn't want students back to, to school. We just need to find that balance and get it there and we will continue working towards that.
It's developmentally inappropriate for K through two to be over learning on Zoom. It's developmentally inappropriate. And we, we can make the space, especially for the K one and two. I'll, I'll just end with that. It's just, it's inappropriate and it's unacceptable to have that green and gray in there. It's unrealistic.
Okay, thank you. Diana D? Could you state your name and address, please?
Hi, yes, Diana D., three Cape Cod Lane. I almost said Hingham, but I guess that's obvious. I just had a question about, somewhat of a follow-up, but on the gray and green. So those are prerequisites for going, for adding more in-person? Is that also, so say we're in green for the required amount of time or gray and then they go in person? If it falls back to yellow or red, does it go back to hybrid or has that not been determined?
That has not been determined. It's only about how we answer it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mary Ellen Garrett?
All right, thank you for taking my question. Mary Ellen Garrett, sixteen Hazelwood Drive. Just on kindergarten, there was no metric listed. If Hingham happens to go into the red, does anything change or is that not been determined?
Nothing changes. We are going in full-time into kindergarten and alternating one and two on January eleventh regardless of our metrics.
Okay, thank you very much.
Unless the state closes us down, we are going to go in.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Stephanie Protell?
Hi, Stephanie Protell, four fifty-one Main Street. I missed the first twenty minutes of the call. What was the decision then on the three, four and five to go back?
That'll actually be part of my, that'll actually be part of my, next part of my discussion when I outline again the, so Stephanie, yeah, you missed the MOA part, but I'm going to do it again on, in just a minute, talking what our phases are.
Okay.
Thank you. Becca, Becca's iPhone, if you could say your name and address. Is Becca's iPhone? If you could just unmute yourself. Okay, if you're able to, then we can come back to you. Dr. Austin, would you like to go ahead with the increasing?
Thank you.
Your two, thanks.
Thank you. And if I can just say, we, we, we understand. We, we hear you. I hear you. This is incredibly difficult. And, and I don't really look for an excuse. We know it's hard on you. We hear that. We know it's hard on families. We know it's scary. We know it's not ideal and we understand the suffering of, that's happening. And we are absolutely dedicated to continue to do our very best to try to get kids in as much as possible. All right, we'll go with the, the next one. Thank you. Julie, can you do the, can you play the slideshow? Okay, so first of all, I'll just do the overview on this. Tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about the foster relocation. We've talked about revised the, and then we'll talk about the revised elementary, our phase reentry plan, which is kindergartens grade one and two and grades three to five. And then some secondary considerations, of course, take more questions, comments. For the foster relocation, so we talked about Foster, St. Jerome, which we're now going to call Foster North. It'll house foster grades one and two, effective on our before February one, twenty twenty, but that's our target date. It will ensure that all of our classrooms are, are in proper instructional spaces. It will provide classroom space back to all specialist teachers within the schools that's in Foster. It will restore school-based use of presentation rooms. This is at Foster and that's current Foster. It will restore the school-based use of our presentation room, our cafeteria, our library and our computer lab at Foster, which are now serving as makeshift classrooms. Foster North will maintain the same start and end times as Foster, as it does now. And then additional information will be forthcoming in January for Principal Wilcox about things such as the drop-off pickup procedures, the transition question and answer sessions will be held with both parents and staff. I think there'll be some visitation allowed, et cetera. So that's coming in early January. So the revised phase reentry, phase two point one. Now, so we have effective January eleventh, students in kindergarten classes across the district will return to school five days per week, Monday through Friday, four hours per day. A traditional half-day kindergarten program is about two and a half hours a day. This is actually a two-thirds program. This will be not charged to any parents because generally we've had a full-time that is a fee-based program. There are no charges for this, but we are going to do a four-hour-per-day program for kindergarten. Kindergarten will maintain five to six feet of social distancing. Given the current enrollments, we will be able to maintain six feet of distance in most, in most of our classes. I think it's all but two right now. So, so that's good news for safety-wise. Also on January eleventh, and this is regardless of where the town is in far as metrics, students in grades one and two will begin to attend in-person on Wednesdays. That'd be January thirteenth, our first day, twenty twenty-one. This is the alternating, alternating weekly cohort A and B. So week one will be cohort A, which will be three days per week. Cohort B will be two days and then week two is cohort A will be two days and cohort B will be three days. All elementary classrooms will be equipped with air purifier as an added precaution to reinforce our, our air quality. Now, in phase two point two, which we're calling it, no sooner than February one or twenty twenty-one. So that's again our target and with a minimum of three weeks of Town of Hingham gray or green and no evidence of based, school-based transmission, students in grades one and two will return to school five days per week, Monday through Friday, four hours, four hours per day. Additional students will require a change to three to six feet of social distancing. Students in grades three, four and five will begin to attend in-person on Wednesdays. An alternate weekly cohorts A and B between, you did this one and two. Week one cohort A for three days, cohort B is two days, week two is the opposite, cohort A is two days and cohort B is three days. As previously stated, all elementary classrooms to be equipped with air purifiers. I do want to say, I, I hear people, what you're saying of why would we do green and gray? Because there may be nursing home. Right now, that is not, what is happening in the Town of Hingham, and we've paid attention to this very closely, is that it is a total spread of the community. There is no differentiating. This is completely across the entire community. And I do understand that people are frustrated with that, but these children have families they go home to. And so with that community spread of why, it's important to get the community spread down to the green or gray level. Because at this point, it seems to be a full community spread and not just in certain areas. Also in phase two, no sooner than March one, twenty twenty-one, end with a minimum of three weeks of Town of Hingham gray or green and no school-based transmission. Students in grades three, four and five will return to school five days per week, Monday through Friday, four hours per day. We will need to change to three to six feet of social distancing. As many people that tell me they are excited about this change to get more in-person, I do want to say there are also, I do also get emails from parents who are concerned about this, who are not excited about moving to, to three feet and understand that as soon as we do that, close contact changes very drastically. And so that is a condition that people are concerned about. And we've taken their consideration, their concerns and considerations as well. And again, to, as an extra caution, we will make sure that all of our classrooms have working air purifiers. For secondary, as we said on January eleven, secondary principals and collaborators and classroom teachers will begin a process to bring more students into in-person learning on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday. This is predicated on class size and enrollment, maintaining six feet of physical distancing. We will prioritize special education students, students on five oh four plans, homeless or foster care students, English language learners, students who have grades that have dropped by a full letter grade or more between terms and our students who have identified social-emotional. I want to thank all the educators. I want to thank the HGA, the staff, the school committee. I want to thank the parents, the students and the town officials who supported our efforts to increase in-person learning for our student. We recognize that the pandemic has challenged us all in many different ways, but we will continue to strive to do what's in the best interest of our entire Hingham public school community. Thanks for everyone for your hard work and perseverance. There is more work to be done. And one thing I didn't say on here, one of the things that I hope that you didn't miss is that we will be meeting with the HGA every, every two weeks. We're doing it twice a month, so we can continue to talk about this. One of those things that you've mentioned today, if we have no spread within the community and our school community itself, you know, that will be a topic that we'll have to discuss. And, and we were, we're going to have those collaborative conversations. We're going to continue to move forward. So we'll all do our very best. Thank you. I'll take the questions.
Thank you. I heard that Becky's iPhone was able to connect. If so, just raise your hand again. We have Kristen Pringle next. Kristen, could you say your name and address for the record? Sorry, we're not hearing you. I don't know if you want to try again. We'll move on to Stephanie Protell and then come back to Kristen.
Hi, sorry, I just, with the update on the three through five, I guess my question is, why, we are in the gray or green, why wouldn't the kids be in school full-time then? Assuming that's like, you know, basically zero transmission and community spread. Why is it still at the half-days at that point?
We have certain things, one of the, one of the answers to that, because the DSC still requires certain activities to be held remotely. We have to do our specials remotely, that's music, that's phys ed, things like that. Lunch is still six feet. And so that becomes our-
Sorry, if you're, sorry, could you get yourself, you're not speaking?
Oh, got it. So I don't know how much you heard of that, Stephanie. So, so part of our problem is that obviously with DSC regulations that require certain things to happen, still be done remotely, such as art specials, music, phys ed, things like that, need to be done remotely. So we, we would take that as well as lunch being spaced at least six feet apart. It becomes really problematic for us, very difficult. And it's one thing that we've watched other communities.
I printed it off my temporary plate. I'm going to bring it to Liam.
Okay, I think we got it. So that's, that's pretty much the answer, Stephanie. That's why.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Kristen Pringle, were you able to, yourself?
I'm actually, can you hear me? Sorry. Hang on, sorry.
Carrie, you're on mute, just so you know.
I know. I'm going to move on to Kathleen Leland first and then we'll come back to Kristen. Kathleen, if you could unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, you could just state your name and address for the record.
Yep, I'm Katie Leland, two forty-three Main Street. So my question is just about the, those January eleventh changes for the secondary schools. And you mentioned, or they mentioned that anyone who, someone whose grade has dropped a letter grade between terms. And as far as I know, at least at the high school level, there won't be a second-term grade yet or full second-term grade. So does that mean from the year of the previous year into this school year? Do you see what I mean?
Paul, you're on mute.
I'm so sorry about that. I was trying to, just, just be quick with the high school folks. I believe that the term change is right around the twenty-first of January. And so it'll be really close to that at that time, along with the other things that we've already established, which are students with special needs, students on five oh four plans with social-emotional issues. And then the term grades, I think, were, are on the twenty-first. Is that, anybody on the high school or Doc's Villaw that's able to answer that? Katie Roberts, do you know when that is? I see you. So you get picked on just because I see you.
And also, just to clarify, Paul, we've been tracking and monitoring students all along. So we're not waiting for that end of term to grade. We're already in discussions about students who are struggling. And again, very collaborative efforts between teachers and administrators to monitor students who are struggling, whether it be for academic reasons or social-emotional reasons. So again, it's, there's not a, a, a necessarily a time to wait for the end of the term. It's an ongoing process.
And I appreciate that, Katie. One of the things I would say, that's already been happening in some cases already. We just wanted to make a more concerted effort to really fill those classroom spaces right now and utilize everything we can. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Kristen, were you able to unmute, unmute yourself?
She's just joining back in right now.
Okay, we'll move on to Becca's iPhone then.
Hi, Becca Pierce, twenty Partridge Drive. I have a question about the high school schedule. Do you have a plan to extend the day? I know that most students right now and at noon every day. And because they have so much free time, I think a lot of socializing is happening and therefore cases are popping up and spreading.
Yeah, I, I want to say a couple of things about the, and, and those are far more adapted the, the, the high school schedule can chime in. But there are also a lot of students that do do specials in the afternoon. They have electives they take, there's music, there's other things that they take in the afternoon. So it's not all students. And there's also another time that has, you know, like a study hall or office hours for staff, et cetera. But can anybody, Katie, you want to chime in on anything else that's happening in the afternoon for students? Or I don't know if Rick's on as another one, Mr., I'm sorry, I lost it for a minute. Let me say Rick, I apologize. Or Katie, it doesn't matter which one. It's just Swanson, there you go, it's on your thing. I apologize. Anything else you want to add to that about the afternoon?
Well, I think you summarized it pretty well, Paul. It, it is true, the majority of students may be finished with their, with their regular academic classes at twelve oh five, but a substantial minority are still in class after that. And then also a significant number are, you know, availing themselves of extra help or participating in after-school athletics as well. It, it may be true that, that students are socializing outside of those school hours. I'm sure that's true. Not just in the afternoon, but at, at other times as well. And we certainly hope that people will remain vigilant and help us to stop the spread.
Yeah, Rick, thank you for that. And I, and I just want to say, there isn't a week that goes by in my office that doesn't feel like that somebody doesn't call our office and tell us something about something in the community. So whether that's twelve oh five or two thirty or on a Saturday or a Sunday, it is occurring. And it's one thing that we're, we're going to ask to please be vigilant with that. Whether it's at twelve o'clock or three o'clock, doesn't really matter. What we need to do is to stop it. You know, I, I had a call today that a group of thirty students were sliding without being distanced or without masks on over the weekend. And so, you know, these are the activities that we have to be incredibly mindful of. And hopefully we can improve. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristen Pringle?
I see that she's still on mute, Carrie, anyway, but.
Is she still?
Yeah, I can see her screen. It's on mute.
Okay, Kristen, can you unmute yourself? Okay, let's go on to Denise Dockery.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Great. Denise Dockery, six Holly. My question, and I apologize, I joined a few minutes late, is surrounding the community transmission. And it's specifically around if there's a, if it's going to be looked at by school or if it's by the whole community. So if there's a transmission that occurs in the middle or high school, the last week of February, is that going to reset the elementary school grades three through five clock? So we'll have to wait for the first three weeks of March before we look at going back to school? Or is it by, is it by school?
No, it's by community, it's by community overall. So hopefully we get to three weeks and then we can get in and then we wouldn't have to reset. I don't think, I don't think there's anything, you know, and I, and I'd be honest, I think everybody knows there's no ideal way to do this when we talk about metrics. You know, the state still doesn't have any metrics about how it moves forward in, in a kind of comprehensive way that we can follow. So we certainly tried to do this. If it doesn't work, we're going to have to go back to the drawing board and have collaborative conversations again. Uh, so we certainly tried to do this. If it doesn't work, um, we're going to have to go back to the drawing board and, and have collaborative conversations again, uh, if it's not working. Um, but we needed to start somewhere.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Um, Kristen Pringle, we'll try, try again.
No, you're not getting it.
Yeah, I know it's not working. Um, David Bulla, sorry if I mispronounced your last.
No, no problem. Thank you. Um, uh, my question, again, it has to do with the metrics and the, the, the setting of them. Increasingly, there's experts and data and studies suggesting the kids should be in school when the schools are not transmission vehicles. And there's, there seems to be growing consensus around that. Um, what data? Um, what studies, what experts are you using to, to judge that green and gray are the right levels, either, either from your side or frankly, if someone from the HEA is on and, and wants to chime in on, on, on that, or anyone else, I'd love to hear it.
You know, David, I'll just say that, uh, again, you know, I don't think there is, first of all, there's not a medical professional on those negotiating teams. We're educators and we're trying to dabble in, um, metrics that, you know, frankly, are really difficult to understand. You know, we see studies, some say yes, some say no. The CDC back in the end of November backed off and said, it's no longer, uh, it's now a risk to have in-person education. Where all along, they were saying it wasn't a risk. Uh, and so we don't, we don't, we don't know. I mean, I, I want to be honest how difficult this is because we just simply don't know. We hear, I mean, there was a, was a, a very, um, uh, informal, I mean, informational, um, talking about Brook, Brookline schools and how they have experts on their, on their panels that really are struggling uh, to trying to find the right balance. I think we're all trying to find the balance. We don't know if this is right or wrong. We just know we had to start somewhere and say we had to have a standard that people could agree to and say, let's try this and move forward. Um, and, and so that's my perspective. And I'll ask, you know, Liza or Michelle, who are in those meetings with me, if they have anything else they want to add.
Um, for all I've read, and I've read things from the Brown, um, Public Health, Brown University Public Health, um, Dean. Just recently, um, there was that Washington Post opinion piece that I noted in my presentation. It, everything is about low transmission in the community. There's no specific, um, measurement. And you know, it's, we're doing, we're feeling it out, we're looking at what we did experience in our own community. Um, we're looking, we've looked at other communities that are pulling back from all in person because rates are climbing in their communities and looking at trends. You know, there, there is, as Dr. Austin said, there is no one magic number. Um, and, but we also have open communication with the staff to keep looking at it and keep managing it. And if we're all managing it and we're doing well, we'll keep going. Um, if it's dangerous and we have concerns, we'll pull back. Um, but we, we do have to start someplace. And it, you know, no one's gone through this before. And we're all trying to just work together and make sure that we're comfortable. And, you know, a couple of weeks ago, we were going through a lot of staff and a lot of students were just quarantined because they were identified as a close contact. And when we had a lot of staff out for just that reason, that wasn't even a transmission rate. But it was just people had to quarantine because they were at risk. And so we just, we don't even want to have that happen again of, and that's all of community transmission rates. Um, that if we start to have too many teachers that are close contact of someone in their own home or their own community outside of school, then we have a challenge of just running our schools. So, um, there's so many variables involved with this that we're just gonna, we're gonna make it work the best we can. And once we start getting more students inside the buildings, we're going to see how that works and then we'll phase in more. So if we all work together and the gray and the green in Hingham, that's a high bar. And we have, how many people on this call? There's 176 people on this call. If you all tell every one of your friends, this is our goal in this community to get these kids back into school. So please pay attention, please don't have a party. Please tell your kids to put a mask on if they're with their friends. Um, wear a mask when they're sledding at the country club, you know, all these things that we can get this transmission rate down. We're going to get the kids back in school and everybody's going to breathe, you know, breathe deeper and easier. And we're going to make it through the school year. So that's all I can add.
Yeah, and, and this isn't so much a question, but I think it's a statement of frustration you hit on, I think, underlying my question. That is, the green and the gray is a high bar. Um, and my gut feel is it's unachievable in any reasonable timeframe of 60 to 90 days from now. So my suspicion is we're essentially on the plane that, plan that we have today for the rest of the school year. And if that's the likelihood, that's, that is what it is, I guess. But, uh, you know, I, I will do more than I can. I'll do everything I can to achieve those green, green and gray bars. And I suspect the folks on this call will. I hope it's achievable. I suspect it's not. So
But David, if I could just.
We're probably at the status quo.
David, could I just say that green now was what red was, uh, in the old metrics? That's what kind of messed us up. That's where we started, right? That was red. And then all of a sudden it turned green. Oh, you know, I, I think that it's changing, the state, it changes irregularly. You hear that frustration and I get it, but that's also why we're going to continue to meet with the HEA. It's not our intent to be status quo for the rest of the year at all. You know, we need to continue to meet about it and, and to see what we can do to move forward. Michelle, I didn't know if I cut you off. I didn't know if I meant to.
Um, David, I'll be honest with you. I'm more worried that the governor is going to shut the whole state down. But we've got to be optimists and we've got to have a goal. And that goal is that we are one community and we're all going to do what's in the best interest of everyone. And that's in being healthy and getting these kids back to school. And I'm just going to keep saying that to everybody I see and try and be an optimist that we are going to hit the goal. Um, that's what we do in our schools is we teach people how to learn and how to live and be good citizens. That's in our mission of being a good citizen. And that's what we've got to focus on. But there is the risk. I mean, we're the only yellow community in the area. Everybody else is red. But we've got to just keep working at it and get there.
Great. Thanks for taking my question.
Thank you. Uh, Joanne Wallace?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi, Joanne Wallace, 14 Mass Hill Road. My question is in regards to the middle school and the high school. You offered a timeline for the elementary school, but for the secondary kids, it's January 11th and nothing else? Is there any chance we might get a more defined timeline as, as to when they make, more of them may return to school?
Yeah, at this time, we didn't, Joanne, and, and again, we focused on the elementary. We will go back to negotiations. We'll continue to work on not just the K to five, but also talking about those other metrics to look at the, um, the upper elementary, I mean, not the upper elementary, sorry, secondary, uh, at the same time. We, at this time, just hitting the, uh, K fives and moving that forward, uh, was the first priority as well as um, utilizing all of our space at six feet at this time. It's not, uh, we're not done, uh, by any means. That's why we'll continue to meet every couple of weeks.
So when should we anticipate more information regarding that?
I, I really don't have a timeline. We're just, as soon as we have some, we will, we've heard people that they want more in transparency. We'll try to do that every, when we meet at the school committee meetings, we'll tell you where we're at.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Catherine Whitlock?
Hi, this is Tori Whitlock of 29 Lincoln Street. Um, my question is, uh, just an extension of the last question that, um, the middle school and the high school are clearly not the priority right now. And we're working on the elementary schools, but we're halfway through the year. Um, so to not have a timeframe when we can get these kids back is, um, somewhat nerve-wracking for those of us who have our children in the Hingham Middle School and the Hingham High School. The second part of my question is, um, or the question I have rather is, what are we doing with the Wednesdays that were reserved for deep cleaning? Now that we know that those are not deep cleaning days, is there any thought to, um, alternating? Since all of our priorities are to get our children back to school more frequently, could be, could we be alternating using these Wednesdays so that Cohort A can get one Wednesday and Cohort B could have another Wednesday and thus getting our kids in school at least once or twice more every month? Um, I'd love to hear from Dr. Austin on that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think, you know, we've, we've talked about this numerous times, about the, the Wednesdays for the, the, uh, secondary. I've continued to hear from educators who say that the ability to put everybody on the, at the same time and use that time to bring everyone together in an equitable way, um, was really meaningful. Uh, it doesn't mean that we're not going to continue to talk about it. We're going to continue to talk about it. But that has been the, the feedback I've received from the educators who really believe still that that's really an important time, uh, for everyone to be together.
Um, let me just clarify. So for the educators to have 24 kids on a Zoom, they are getting a good read on how those middle schoolers and high schoolers are doing more than having some kids in class? Because then it's not going, that seems to be contradictory to our priority that we keep talking about of getting the kids in school more frequently.
I, I understand that. I understand that.
So is it something that we're looking into getting our kids?
We continue to talk about that constantly. We will continue to talk about that as we continue to think about how we can get more in-person learning. That you have my word on.
Okay, I just want to understand too, like, what's the obstacle with having them come in on Wednesday? They really see, the teachers are really seeing equality in having 25 kids on Zoom versus having them in the classroom?
I'm going to ask for, um, I don't know if Mr. Swanson, Katie Roberts, Dave, uh, David, I know you're on here too. Anybody want to speak to that?
I'm happy, I'm happy to take that, Paul or Rick, if you're, um, available. I think, uh, one advantage that teachers are finding is Wednesday is the one day um, that they see all of their, uh, at the high school, see all of their classes, um, for a shorter period of time. So, uh, at the high school, we have the longer block schedule. So the students are seeing, um, A through C on Monday, um, D through F on Tuesday. And Wednesday, um, provides kind of a check-in day, um, for the teachers, um, to check in, uh, with all of their students. So again, as Dr. Austin said, um, it's constantly being reevaluated, um, but, uh, in the current block schedule, um, there's been some advantages, um, to that Wednesday schedule. Rick, did you want to add?
Katie, I'm just going to chime in again because you guys keep saying there's an advantage in the teacher perspective of, we're, we're saying our priority is to get the kids in school. But now you're saying on Wednesdays, the teachers want 25 kids on Zoom instead. So that is, that is, does seem to me to be different than our priority of getting children into school when we are able to do so. You're having 20, it's an easy check-in to have 25 kids on your Zoom and understand how they're doing. It just doesn't sound effective.
Uh, understood, Tori. So again, um, weighing the, you know, um, the, um, the time with students, um, in person. There are some curriculum advantages to having that day on Wednesday in order to check in with all students. Um, so again, I do understand, um, that we are weighing, um, multiple, um, factors here. Um, but just purely from kind of a curriculum standpoint, having that day, uh, where you are able to check in with all of your students, see all of the faces, um, together, um, has been something that under the current model, um, has had some advantages. Again, weighed against, um, the in-person, um, component of it. So, uh, Rick, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I think it's a good, a good summary, Katie, but it's a, it's a discussion that I think should remain open as well. So I would, I wouldn't want to imply that it's a closed topic at all, but, uh, that's, that's been my sense, uh, so far as well. I, I noticed, Dave, too, that you look like you were starting to talk, but were muted a minute ago. So if you had something really good that you wanted to bring in, uh, feel free to jump in there. All right. I, I think it's probably also worth noting too, the, um, the steady rise in students who have opted to be fully remote. We, we actually hit the 25% threshold last week at the high school, which, which is interesting to note. Um, it doesn't subtract from our interest in, in having as many students in the building as possible right now, but it, it's been interesting, I think, as a barometer of the mood of the community as a whole, that uh, we now have well over 300 students at Hingham High School who, who have chosen or their families have chosen for them to be fully remote. And, um, we have now tipped the 25% mark, um, which is, um, you know, I think has, it's been surprising to me. We started the school year with, I think, 90 students all remote. We're now, uh, well over 300.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Jack Carey?
Hi, Jack Carey, 14 Sherwood Road. Thank you, uh, for the information tonight. The, uh, clarification that I could use is around, uh, the, the four-hour days and why many of these plans don't consider having kids in school for more than four hours per day.
Yeah, I mean, I, I've, I've, uh, talked about that a couple of times, um, scary. I, one of them is that we have some things under DESI rule that can't be done in person. Those are the specials. And so we use that time to do our specials, music, phys ed, those things, uh, as well as we're still, uh, the ability to have lunch, um, and spread students six feet across, um, with the, with the size of our schools, um, would be incredibly problematic. Uh, and so that's an area until the DESI releases some of their guidelines or reduces, uh, their requirements. Um, that six, that, that, um, four, four hours per day, uh, is really allowing us to, to stay in and, and do the educational piece. We need DESI to reduce their guidelines, uh, for us to be able to move forward into more in-person, uh, time.
Thank you. Just one quick follow-up. Um, do we have a sense if that's consistent with, with other towns around their, their approaches? And, um, their, their plan to bring kids back into schools?
No, I, I don't have a, I know that some people and probably many are, are six hours a day. Um, and, and, but I can't tell the size of their schools. Um, you know, they may have more space, they have more ability. I mean, we talked, we've heard tonight about, um, schools being full-time. And many schools are able to do that because they can still use six feet distance. Um, or they've got three feet and, and we don't have the space to do that. So I can't really speak to how other people have done that. You know that there are districts and, and certainly we do recognize that, that are doing six hours a day. Um, if you were going to do that, and, and, and I think there will be plenty of time to, to study this afterwards. Um, we're live streaming at the secondary level, um, all of our days. Uh, and there are many districts that might have a full six-hour day, but on the days they're not in, they're not live streaming. Um, and so in the end, um, you know, which is better? I don't, I don't know. Time will tell. Um, but certainly I can't be, say that's consistent across the, across the Commonwealth. If anything, as a superintendent, I can see our inconsistencies on many different, um, platforms.
Yeah, and, and I'll just say, as Liza mentioned earlier, we all read everything and we talk to other school committees and see what they do. They're honestly all over the map as far as what their reopening plans look like. Some are completely remote at the high school and have been since the beginning of the year. It just all depends on the resources and the space and all sorts of other factors within the community. So we are looking at those things, but, um, but they really are all over the place. Um, Stephanie Pertel?
Hey there, um, 451 Main Street. I, um, just want, I had heard the word negotiation a few times and saying that you would go back and negotiate, um, from time to time. And I just wasn't sure, I, I'm not clear who that is actually negotiating with. Because it seems like, I think it was, um, Michelle or Liza talking about, you know, we are on the same page and the goal is to get the kids back in school where they belong and not have to deal with these mental health issues that are probably going to be lifelong for.
Oh, sorry, Stephanie, you're muted again.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yeah, yeah, sorry about that.
Okay, sorry. Um, so I just wanted to know, like, what that negotiation, um, who it, who it was actually, um, with and what that process was.
That negotiation that we're talking about is the same negotiation teams that does this MOA. Um, and so we will be meeting at least twice per month, uh, with the same group of people who make those decisions. Um, that's the HEA, um, on their end with their representative and their teacher representatives. And then it'll be, uh, on our side, it'll be our attorney, uh, with, uh, Michelle Air, Liza, uh, and myself and Dr. Ladilla.
So it's clearly a union, it's, it's a union negotiation then?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. It's the same groups.
Okay, I just, I just think that that has been the most frustrating part for, for parents who are seeing their children's education fall apart. Um, knowing that a lot of it doesn't. Um, knowing that a lot of it doesn't have to do anything with the children of this town um and more of a union negotiation.
Understood.
Okay, I don't see any more.
Carrie, can I comment on that? So Stephanie, um, the the, the teachers do care about the children of our town. They care about them a lot. And um, we also.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't, I, I didn't say that the teachers don't. I know for a fact that I have had great, amazing teachers for my children and they've been amazing. I never said that the teachers don't. I don't know if the union has our children's best interest at heart.
Okay, well. You can, I don't.
Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, Michelle.
No, sorry, because I think sometimes there's a, a misunderstanding about the union versus the teachers. So the union is the teachers and the teachers are the union. So I, I think what, what Liza's trying to say, and Stephanie, I totally understand, like, e- everyone knows and appreciates how amazing our teachers are. Um, this is just I mean, I, I, it feels like it goes without saying, but we have to keep saying it. This is incredibly trying, right? It is incredibly trying for students and for parents and also for our educators. No one else is being asked to do what teachers are being asked to do during a pandemic. And I know that's not what people want to hear, but no one's, no one e- even doctors and nurses and everyone, like everyone is doing what they can and doing the best to get through this time. And I know that our teachers are as well. And I know it's incredibly hard on kids and it's incredibly hard on parents to watch their kids struggling through this. And it's hard for the teachers to, to see it and feel it too. Um, so I just don't want people to misunderstand or to think that the the teachers don't care or that the union doesn't care because again, the teachers are the, and the union is the teachers. Um, and they do really care and are doing their best to get the kids through this year as well as keeping themselves safe and healthy so that they can keep all of our families in the community healthy and safe as well.
Okay, and I want to add something to this because I, I will tell you that I know that a lot has been said. You know, we read those, we see the Facebook posts, you know, we don't have to look for them, they become out there and teachers read that, the association read that, I read that. I read all the things that are being said. Um, I, I can tell you that at the end of the day, I have absolutely every confidence that the, the leadership of the union, the members of the union, every single teacher, every educator, every person that works with this, this this unit, this, this unit of Hingham Public Schools cares deeply about the students. School committee to every single one of us cares deeply. I think what's unprecedented, we've never been in a position ever in our history of having to negotiate all of these rules, these regulations, these helpings that nobody's ever had to do before. So all of these things, while, while understandably the frustration is happening, people are being asked to negotiate things and to care for members and to, and to do things they've never been asked to do. It's hard work, yeah, and people are really dedicated to doing it. But I want to be really clear today that the association is not the enemy. The teachers are not the enemy. Superintendent is not the enemy. The school department, the school committee is not the enemy. The parents are not the enemy. COVID nineteen is an enemy. And we have to fight it and we have to fight it hard. And we have to somehow not blame each other to make it happen and move forward. There isn't a day that we haven't lost sleep, that we haven't taken it personal. Right? That, you know, I, I saw school committee members turning their cameras off last time because people said that they didn't care about students. He said, I didn't care about students, far from the truth, far from the truth. It's hurtful. It doesn't help us move forward. And we're going to get there. So this isn't perfect metrics. This isn't a perfect green, yellow, red, whatever it's going to be. We all get it. We all do. We're all going to sit at the table. We're all going to do it collaboratively. I applaud our teachers. I applaud their efforts. I applaud the HEA. I applaud the school committee. And I specifically applaud the parents and students for all that we're going through.
Okay, thank you. I, there are three more hands up right now. We're gonna, I'm going to end with Juliette. Um, so we'll start with Tracy Buckridge.
Hi, uh Tracy Buckridge, one oh eight Bickerton Way. I just want to confirm that I heard Mr. Riordan correctly that one of the excuses that the high school only goes to school half-day is based on um athletics. Did I hear that correctly?
No, that was not, that's not accurate. We said we do athletics, but that's not why we, we only do the, and it's not a half a day, it's a three-quarter day.
On Wednesdays, it's the half day.
Yeah, okay.
Basically half day.
Four hours, our normal day would be six and it's four. Um, but, but no, it's not about athletics.
Mr. Riordan did use that as one of the excuses. I just want to remind the town that not everybody participates in athletics and that certainly should not be um a priority here. Not sure my kids are playing basketball, but they're not going to school.
Agreed, understood.
My daughter's a senior and it looks like from your plan, she will not get a senior year at all, and it's incredibly upsetting. And I hope you don't think that the fact that more kids are joining virtual is something me proud of, as Mr. Riordan said, because my son, I have to beg him to go to school the two lousy days he gets because he says it is um just there's no point in wasting time going to and from a high school. You can't even have a sip of water, you can't talk to your friends. There's literally no point. So do not be proud that more kids are choosing to go virtual because they're doing it because this plan is terrible. Thank you for your time.
Okay, Catherine. Okay, sir. Catherine Whitlock?
Hi, I did want to circle back to the same point that Tracy just made that it, it is alarming to hear the twenty-five percent threshold to go remote at the high school. And so my question is, um, how are we understanding from the administration um perspective why that is rising so fast and furiously? Is it because people are worried about getting sick? Or is it because the model is not working? Are we doing focus groups or are we doing interviews or surveys to understand? That is, that's one-fourth of the student body that's leaving the high school with, you know, an age group that can handle COVID better than kind of the other age groups in the system.
I don't know. Mr. Swanson, do you want to answer any of that or anything from the high school?
Well, I, I think the, the reasons are probably uh highly varied. And uh in many cases, it's legitimate concerns for safety. People obviously have different thresholds and many people are uh understandably concerned about the rising numbers of, of positive COVID cases. Um, we've had over thirty cases in the high school community this year, uh including nineteen in December. So I think as those numbers have risen pretty quickly over the past several weeks, that coincides with the, the pretty substantial increase um in students opting for fully remote. Uh, we haven't done any formal surveys yet to, to gauge the specific reasons why. Um, and I'm sure that many people are intending and certainly hoping for this to be temporary uh and to return, and we certainly hope they will.
Okay, thank you. Uh Juliette?
Juliette Fulgony, one forty-two Hershey Street. Um, uh, I, I am excited. I do feel like there's promise and I do, um, you know, I'm also looking at vaccine because I'm just I'm trying to stay positive and I'm looking at vaccine and thinking, okay, spring is it. We're done, we're done with this, it's out of here, let's go. And I think we're all there. Um, but I think, so I can't, I think it was Michelle that had said, you know, or some, maybe it was Dr. Austin's had said, you know, no one's doing more than teachers for these kids. And I love every single teacher that I've had so far and friends with and family with a lot of teachers. And I talked to a lot of them about their feelings about this too. I tend to disagree that no one's doing more for these kids this semester because you know, um, I'm teaching quote-unquote my son three days a week and two afternoons and, and that that's more than half. Um, and, and like someone else had just said, I'm begging and the the little bit that I get him on his screen, it's because I've bartered or I begged or have threatened or you know, I keep saying my son's teacher this year is terrible. She's impatient, she's not helpful, she doesn't have a single day of teaching experience. She's inattentive, she's on conference calls with other people all day long and um obviously I'm talking about myself. Um, but there is um, you know, there's no situation, I mean, if anybody ever told me that that was a real teacher, I would have had her fired on day one. Um, I, I want to fire myself so bad. Um, so I, 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 I feel like, you know, we are doing everything and I think one of the biggest frustrations that the parents have is just to kind of put it into perspective is a teacher, of course, the teachers' union is um, is caring, you know, they are teachers, they care about the kids, of course, they wouldn't do this job without it. But as a union member, their job is to protect the people in their party, if you will. Um, and so the union um leaders are important to do that because you have to protect the benefits, et cetera. Um, as parents, our job is to be the union leader for our children. And so I'm trying to be an advocate for my child and for all of the children in Hingham to say that we as union members, if you will, I think I've earned that right as uh as much as I've been doing, is if I'm going to be a union leader for my people, then you know, you have to remember, we don't get negotiation consideration. Um, and so I think the frustration is um, is that we kind of just get whatever we get. And I, again, I do feel very positive, but I want you to remember, please, if you could, that when you hand us something, I think we're supposed to just be happy because it's more. But, but it's, you know, it's still, it's still not what we want. So we still, you know, we still don't get a hand in the negotiation, we get handed something instead. So um I am really grateful for what you are doing. I recognize how hard it is to get anything implemented new. But I um, you know, I'm, I'm looking forward to, you know, March fifteenth's plan and April first's plan which does include um the consideration of the vaccinations and um, you know, rates going way down and having them in full-time before the end of the year.
Okay, thank you, Juliette. Liza, did you have something?
Yeah, I just, Juliette, I wanted to follow up with you that um, I'm a parent of a student too. I've heard you, I'm here, I was elected to represent you and I, I get it. And, but also, a negotiation is a collaborative agreement. And everyone comes out of it with some kind of benefit, but it doesn't mean that each person gets a hundred percent of what they wanted going into it. Um, that's, that's what a negotiation is about, that you work together to achieve everyone's best interest that works out together. Um, so yes, we, we are representing, Michelle and I as school committee members are the parent representatives in this whole equation. And we have tried our darndest to listen to as many people as possible and as many comments and to mesh all of that into representing all of you. Um, and I, I, I don't know how much more to say that, but we, we have, we've listened to you, we've tried to digest it all and represent you as best you could, but we have to work together and take everyone's concerns and interests in mind and come up with a joint agreement, so.
Sure, and I want to make sure that I, I reiterate, I'm so grateful for that. I'm not saying that I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm grateful that we have it um and have you guys, you know, speaking for us. I just know that it's, it's hard, you know, God bless the people who are doing well because I do know that there are some kids that are like, oh, my kid's actually doing really well. And I can hear some students in my kids' class saying, you know, like talking to the teacher about how much they did. And I'm like, my son's done done one single assignment all semester long. So um I do thank you and I, I just know that there is not, you know, kids don't learn the same way. And so I do think that there's um, you know, hopefully going to be a time when, I, I don't know, maybe some of the younger kids are considered earlier if they are falling way behind.
Yeah, I, I hear you and I encourage you to talk with your teacher about it directly, but also that yeah, I've gone through my own personal challenges during this whole pandemic and it's, it sucks. Life really can suck right now, but we've just uh, you know, we've all just got to keep moving forward and I, I look at that vaccine too and I think about, yep, what's the spring going to bring and we're gonna, it's all gonna get better. So we just got to keep moving forward. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Um, so thank you for all the questions and comments. Um, now eight point one is student communications. Carly, thank you for your patience. I think I saw you on here. If you want to unmute yourself.
Hi, everyone.
Hey, Carly.
So recently, the high school held a virtual um award ceremony where a select twenty-seven students from our student body were presented with the um Andrew R. Hoffte Catching Kindness Award. Um, this award allows for faculty members to nominate students and to demonstrate exceptional compassion for others. So this ceremony um was held virtually on a Tuesday night um two weeks ago and all those students were recognized. Um, and then our winter sports seasons have officially begun and games will start taking place after Christmas break, so around the first week in January. Um, student council, um as requested in the last meeting, is um in the process of finishing a video that we have been created um where we are asking students from all grades to submit videos where they discuss their hopes for normalcy after COVID and um how students throughout high school can help this happen soon. So um we hope that once this video is completed and released, it'll raise more awareness um and that students will be more apt to follow these suggestions because they're coming from their peers. Um, sports teams have also been creating their own videos and have been posting them on social media. So um students have been able to watch those and be um educated on COVID guidelines and how to reduce the spread. And then lastly, our um Spreading Acts of Kindness Club has been collecting protective equipment and accepting donations for the social hospital and they plan on distributing those at the end, at the beginning of January. Um, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that update. Um, do any committee members have any questions for Carly? No. Well, thank you very much. And next time there's something on the agenda that's going to create a lot of conversation, we'll make sure to put you first. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
All right, um, next is eight point two, communications received by the superintendent. Dr. Austin, do you have anything?
Yeah, thank you. Just quickly, um, just reiterate the um, the positive news that we have. The MSBA uh in an unprecedented move approved not only one project and moving forward into feasibility for foster but also the PRS Window Project SOI. Um, that's incredibly good news for the town of Hingham. Uh incredibly new, good news for the uh Hingham Public Schools and for our students uh moving forward and uh the, the future is very bright. Uh, and, and that literally very bright as we get new windows at, at PRS uh to bring more lighting to our classrooms and uh to, to begin in earnest the feasibility of foster, uh looking at that process. Um, and in the feasibility time, that is a time that we have to do uh both. We have to look at what feasibility of either renovating or replacing that building is. I know that people feel strongly on both accounts, uh both counts of whether it should be renovated or replaced. I know there's strong feelings of that. It's just required by law, but that's the process we undertake. Uh, but it's going to be exciting next few months. Uh, and uh another years uh as we move forward with uh hopefully a new foster school uh and getting that ready to, to go and maybe even open uh in the fall of, I think it's twenty-four or the spring of twenty-five. So that's what we project. Well, so some very good news and uh appreciate the MSBA, appreciate our uh foster building committee. Appreciate John uh Ferris from our uh office getting the SOIs in and the support of both uh the school committee and the board select.
Okay, thank you. Um, eight point three is other communications. Does anyone have anything? Okay, seeing none. Uh, nine point one is to hear an update on the fiscal year twenty-one HPS operating budget. Dr. Austin, do you?
I'm sorry, I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I had to catch up with you just for a second, yeah. There was nothing really more in the, I, I really have nothing. I put this on the budget every, I mean, or this budget uh on every um agenda. Uh, at this time, we're moving as we had planned. Uh, there are no real new um changes to the budget itself. Um, I want to thank John Ferris and his office for. Um, I want to thank, uh, John Ferris and his office for managing that very well. Uh, and there's a lot of moving parts to that budget, but right now we, we continue to move forward without uh, any significant changes that we've already told you about. Uh, Mr. Ferris, do you want to add anything to that at all?
Um, not really, Paul. I mean, it's, uh, the, um, uh, it is, it's basically the same as it was. There's been no notable changes aside from what we identified the last time. Um, you know, that being that the, the heating bills probably will reverse a bit. But, um, you know, we continue to, you know, monitor all the expenditures closely. Um, we have submitted another COVID reimbursement, um, you know, to upwards of over a half a million dollars. So, you know, those processes are, they're, they're labor intensive, they, they take a while to do, but, um, you know, we're making good progress and um, you know, sort of look forward to, um, you know, what the new package will be that, you know, just got voted in today. So, you know, we'll have to digest that and see how, um, how things go relative to, um, you know, support for municipalities and schools.
Yeah, if I, if I could just add to that real quickly, I think what Don, when he said the new package with the federal government, making the stimulus program available and how that impacts us in the future, obviously, we're gonna be watching that very closely.
And I would just note that tomorrow night, the Board of Selectmen is meeting and the advisory committee and the school committee will be joining them. And we will be discussing, we've kind of discussed in our forecast meetings that both on the school side and the town side, we've discovered some, um, weaknesses in our, throughout this COVID process. And so to talk about how we support that in the next year's budget. So people are encouraged to attend. And for the committee members, I sent you the financial presentation that it will happen tomorrow night too, so you can review that in, in advance. Um, ten point one is to hear a report from the Counseling Department.
Yeah, I'll, I'll start this real quickly. I'm gonna turn it over to Heather Rodriguez in just a minute. First of all, I want to take a moment to uh, thank Heather for putting this together for tonight. Um, you know, we are, obviously, we hear a lot about the concerns about the mental health of, of our students, uh, and we're also concerned about that uh, on a daily basis. Uh, and I thank the work of the Counseling Department across the entire district. Uh, they're an incredible group of individuals who care deeply about our students. Uh, and now I'll turn it over to Heather, uh, and allow her to make her presentation.
Thanks, Dr. Austin. Um, all right, I'm just gonna quickly get my presentation up there for us all. Bear with me for one quick moment. And I'll go into present mode. All right. So, hi, everyone, I'm Heather Rodriguez. Um, thanks so much for your interest in the work that we do and for taking the time to hear about it tonight. Um, tonight, I just want to share some information about the Counseling Department and the supports that we offer in our schools. Um, just want to reiterate that we know this is a difficult time. Um, the health and wellness of our, all of our students is in the forefront of our minds at all times. Each day brings new optimism, uh, for light at the end of the tunnel. And it's also a difficult time with increasing cases that we learn about every day. So we have to hold multiple truths in our minds at the same time. Um, there is hope that we need to do what we need to do that is necessary, um, to keep our family safe. So, hope and being precautious at the same time. Um, so that's what our district is tasked with, being optimistic and planning for the safe return of students to full in-person person school, while making sure that those in our care remain safe. Uh, we join with the community in wanting the best for our kids. We're all humans, like has been said before, living through this time. Like you, we do our best to manage our own work and family obligations simultaneously. We have a broad range of lived experience with that impact of the pandemic on our schools, on our own personal families, on those we care for and about. None of us is immune to the impact and none of us wants to have to make the very real, personal and very difficult decisions that we have to do every day about holidays, visiting parents, visiting our relatives that we haven't seen before the pandemic or longer. Um, we're a community making decisions that the impact and it's over, interwoven in the fabric of our whole community, um, in our extended community. So we have dedicated teachers, administrators, counseling staff that serve as a resource for our students. This may be the first time that a lot of families have felt the need to talk to someone about their child's mental health. Um, and we're here to help guide families. If you feel that something's not right with your student and how they're handling school at this time, absolutely, please reach out to us, um, and get some support. We are here for you. Uh, the Counseling Department has always been focused on the emotional health of our students. Um, if our students aren't emotionally well-regulated, then they aren't at their optimum for learning. And in this time, it's even more important to the school and whatever form it takes is welcoming and safe for our kids, even when it can't be ideal. Um, we all know that full in-person time, it full in, full-time in-person learning is what's best, and that's the goal that we're all working toward. Um, but we're not just wishing for that to be the case. Going into the school year, we wanted to make sure that our staff was prepared with knowledge and that they made a point to take care of themselves as well. Um, all right. So, setting the stage. Um, we had a full day of professional development for our staff on the social emotional health of our students. And that included several presentations. Um, the Counseling Department has always been focused on the emotional health, like I just said, and um, we wanted to make sure that everyone can recognize what's going on with the students that were coming back in front of them. And so we did trauma sensitivity training. Um, training for the staff to recognize warning signs of trauma and then how to respond to it as well. Um, we did a, a training on calm classroom, which is a new, I'll talk about this in a minute or so. But it's a new tier-one district-wide implementation, um, of a mindfulness program that's meant to help students with emotional regulation. Then we did some self-care strategies, um, because we know that taking care of ourselves, no matter who you are, what job you have, is so very important at this time. And you can't help someone else if you're not okay yourself. And so, um, a little bit of self-reflection and self-knowledge is really important. And it's important not only for ourselves, but then as parents, as teachers, as administrators, to help those around us. Um, and once you can kind of practice a couple of skills yourself, you can speak from firsthand experience and model that for your students, model that for your kids, model that for those in front of you and your family. And then we also had a training on universal screening. So many of you know, a few years ago, we started the Hingham Tiered System of Support Social Emotional Task Force. Uh, and we, as a regular part of what we do in any year, is do an emotional screening for our students and then get the results and respond. Um, so that continues to this day. So, um, next, we knew that we were gonna have particular trauma, um, coming back into our schools right from the very beginning. And so what we did is we put together, um, a brief trauma screening that every parent in the district had the option to fill out for their student if they felt like they were impacted. And that, um, gave us a sense of anyone coming back who had experienced um, a particularly difficult impact from the COVID crisis. So anxiety over getting sick or fearing that someone is getting sick or their family member being sick. Or, um, fear of having depression or all of the life changes that all of us have experienced. Loss, grief, loss of a parental job, um, employment, family stresses have certainly gone up. Um, we've all seen that in our own families, we all see that in our community around us as well. Um, so we wanted to make sure that anyone who felt that their student was in particular danger, um, or had experienced trauma, that we identified them quickly and got them supports. So calm classroom, I referenced a little bit earlier, calm classroom, um, sorry, I'm just gonna my view of all the speakers and the participants is blocking my view of the slide. Um, so calm classroom empowers students, this is straight from Calm Classroom's website. Um, empower students and educators to cultivate peaceful, engage school communities through the regular practice of mindfulness techniques that support mental and emotional wellbeing. Um, so it uses those research-based mindfulness techniques to help students and develop, um, teachers develop self-awareness, mental focus and emotional regulation, which is if we can check in with ourselves and check in with our students from time to time and make sure that any emotional needs that they have or vulnerabilities that they feel are being, the needs are being met, then we can, um, better deal with that and get them primed for learning. Then if they are emotionally unregulated and worried about something in the moment, they're never gonna focus on what's going on in front of them. Um, so this has been rolled out district-wide to try and help all of us. Check in with ourselves and have some coping skills and good tools. All right, next. We have, um, some community program that we've brought to the community back in October. Lynn Lyons is a psychotherapist and international speaker. Um, she deals, she's written a book about, um, anxiety in parents and students. And so we invited her to speak to our whole community, anyone who wanted to attend that evening, um, about how we deal with that, particularly in this pandemic. So we had, um, that program, a parent night program regarding anxiety in parents and children, and we are planning more things such as that to come in the future. Um, universal screening, like I said, we at the elementary level use the Student Risk Screening Scale, which, um, kind of rates students on internalizing and externalizing behaviors. So internalizing is more anxiety, depression is what, um, you can think of as a layperson. And externally behave, externalizing behaviors are more, um, the acting out, uh, the hyperactivity, the behavior issues that we see. Um, so teachers rate the students that they see in front of them. And, um, there are follow-up interventions by adjustment counselors for students who are in at-risk categories. Similarly, at the secondary level, students are a little more intuitive about their own needs and their own feelings. Um, sometimes those, they match perfectly with how their parents view them. Sometimes they, um, have some insight into themselves that they haven't yet shared with their parents. So we rely on the students at the secondary level to fill out a questionnaire. And, um, that similarly identifies some issues. And we do follow-up intervention, um, by school and adjustment counselors at the secondary level. And so what do counselors do? What have we always done? Um, we have school counselors and adjustment counselors. They continue to offer individual meetings with students from their caseload that's been in existence, um, both in person and remotely. They also take on new referrals when someone identifies, um, that their student, um, as a teacher or as a parent or as another staff member has a conversation with some students, they can have a conversation with the adjustment counselor and make a new referral as well. Um, and we consult with teachers and administrators constantly. We created a resource page for families, uh, specifically to the response to COVID, and that is on our school website. Um, we've always had a resource list of outside therapists. The adjustment counselors right now are kind of working to standardize it a little bit more. There's been a lot of change, as you can imagine, um, in COVID times. And so they're making sure that, um, it's a little bit more user-friendly that we can publish to families, um, if they feel the need to, um, connect with an outside provider. We've always done community outreach and connection to community support programs. We have a number of families, like I mentioned before, that, um, parents have lost jobs, they're going through food or job insecurity, and they really need basic life support in addition to social, emotional, academic support. So, um, as a counseling staff, we've always been involved in doing some community outreach and supporting the community when there's, um, pressing kind of basic needs that need to be met as well. Um, like I said, we connect families to resources. Um, we are constantly checking in with teachers, talking about our kids as a school as a whole to see if there are any students that are having a difficult time or, um, acting a little bit different than they have, and so that we want to check in with them. And we're always, um, working to advocate with our school administrators because we sometimes hear from students themselves or families themselves before an administrator would. Um, at the secondary level, I know because students have more than one teacher throughout the day, um, we kind of serve as the people who connect the dots. And sometimes if we hear one or two teachers are seeing something similar in a student, we want to check in with them more and get them um, a little more support. And whether that's social, emotional, whether that's advocating for their academic need, needs being met in a different way. Um, we advocate for the increase of supports who are, uh, of kids who are struggling. At the elementary level, also, um, right in the beginning of the year, um, we knew we couldn't do the screening by the teachers immediately because they had a new crop of kids that they were still getting to know. But we didn't want to wait long before identifying kids that might be having some issues. So we did two quick universal screens, um, by the teachers within the first month of school, so that they could kind of, as they got to know students, pick up on behavior changes or, um, just check in with students if they seem to be struggling emotionally or displaying any difficulty engaging in the learning process. Um, we always have the Second Step Bullying Prevention Lessons in grades three through five. We use the Toolbox Program, which is another tier-one preventative program. Um, that is all about understanding your emotions, social and academic success. Um, it gives students, or it builds upon the set of skills that students already possess. Um, as most of us know, a lot of our kids are remarkably resilience, resilient, and we've seen that, um, in these days, and a bunch of them need help with that as well. Um, so we want to give them the skills and cultivate that awareness in them that they possess, um, strength within themselves to help um, manage difficult feelings and build relationships, and they can get support as well. And then we are always, um, helpful to families in referring students, um, and families for outside mental health support. So as a counseling staff, um, we help students access their learning. Um, we are not their primary clinician for mental health, um, but we try and help um, engage with those service providers, if they exist for a student, to help join with them and the family to help make learning, um, be at its best and do what we can to help students succeed. At the secondary level, same thing, we have advocacy for student academic supports in a number of different ways. Um, so when staff members notice that kids are struggling, we want to do something about it. Um, teachers, counselors, assistant principals, we've all been monitoring together students who are having difficulty engaging, um, especially remotely and providing outreach to those students and families, trying to offer creative solutions and, um, see what we can do to help them. Um, at the secondary level, a lot of clubs are still up and running, albeit virtually. Um, just to allow for extra interaction and social opportunities for students to come together. Um, maybe they don't love, um, a content area class as much as they do the chess club. Um, so we want to try and give them some opportunities to see each other informally. Um, but yeah, in a structured environment. Um, some sports were able to have fall seasons. We heard that the winter sports season just started. Um, I know that the drama program was doing a production as well. So, um, it's not just sports that are going, we do have a lot of activities that are still ongoing as well. Um, counselors also do referrals for outside mental health support. Um, whenever we're contacted by a parent who might need some referrals, we try and get those to them as soon as we can. Um, so they can help, uh, just have another team member to help their student. In January, coming up at the high school, P-Flag will do presentations to all freshmen. Um, and then we have a Breathe Out Suicide Prevention Program that, um, teaches peers to recognize warning signs of depression and connect their friends to adult support. Um, that is for all freshmen as well, and that's something that we've been ongoing, um, doing ongoing uh, for the past ever since I can remember. Um, so this is my twentieth year in the district, so it's been quite a while. Um, so that's something that we've always offered. So that, um, is the end of the formal part of the presentation, so I'll stop sharing my screen there. So I hope, um, that's been helpful in just kind of delineating what we do as a counseling department. A lot we have always done. Um, but obviously, this is a new, um, frontier, and we need to put extra supports in place as well.
Thank you very much. Um, does anyone on the committee have any questions or comments?
I do, sorry. I'm sorry, it's Michelle, I have a quick one. Hello, Heather, how are you?
Hi.
Um, just a quick question. Thank you for all that was really helpful information. And you had mentioned that you had done a survey in the beginning of the school year. Are there any thoughts to do sort of a mid-year check-in, maybe after the holidays with folks?
Well, what kind of survey? Sorry, I don't.
No, that's okay. In the beginning, you had said that you had, um, reached out to sort of an updated screen, that you had reached out to parents if there were any concerns that they were having about their children in general, if there were anything happening going on. I just was wondering if you're thinking about doing a similar screen in maybe January.
Got you. Yeah, that was, um, that was the trauma screening. So we haven't talked about updating the trauma screening, but that's something that we certainly could look at. What we are in the process of now, which will hopefully kind of, I don't want that to be redundant, but, um, we're do, we're starting the universal screening process right now that's going to identify. Um, so teachers are doing that at the elementary level. And students are doing that, it's already happened at the middle school, it's about to happen, um, at the high school. So that actually will be the screening process. Um, but we certainly want parents at any point that they have a concern about their student, don't wait for a, a formalized parents at any point that they have a concern about their student, don't wait for a formalized screening opportunity. Please reach out, you know, if it's an academic problem, reach out to the teacher. If it's a social emotional problem, reach out to, or just not even a problem, you're just noticing something a little bit different, reach out to the counselor. And if, you know, we can help determine what are some good next steps and where do we go with that? And how are we going to put supports in place and?
Awesome. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. So I'm not seeing anything else from the committee, but I see a couple of hands. Sarah, if you could just say your name and address for the record.
Hi, yeah, this is Sarah Amelia. I'm at eighty six Percy Street. Thank you so much for your time. This is something that's really been on my mind and it's new to me. My, my son has had some issues this year that are that are new. And I think, you know, I I'm probably not alone, but the upper elementary students, they're just, as any student, they're dealing with some the instability with Monday, Tuesday being very different than Wednesday, being different than Thursday, Friday. And a lot of them, I think, are going through, you know, my child in particular, a grieving process in that school is so different than what it used to be. You know, the elementary schools are so fun and they always were so fun. And so much of that fun, you know, isn't not that the the teachers are so amazing and it's nothing to do with that. But a lot of the fun is just lost when there's no recess and there's no gym and there's no time in the cafeteria with friends and things. And so, you know, there, there's just something going on with, with one of my children in particular. I'm worried. I'm very worried, but I don't know that it rises to the level of being noticed by by anyone. And I just, you know, what, what's the next step? What, what do you do? How do you, how do you reach out? He, he, he just isn't happy anymore with, with school. And that's hard. It's a massive change. And I, I don't, as a parent, know what to do as a first step to try to help, other than to try to, you know, be the fun cheerleader at home, which I've tried. It's not working so well. So just, I'm just wondering what's the next step.
Right. I absolutely hear you and I, I can feel the emotion in your voice and we all see.
I'm trying to control that. Sorry.
Don't worry, I do the same thing.
It's been so hard to witness. It really has. Like this, this is a child who has never not loved school.
Right. And as parents, we know our kids. We notice the differences first. And so if you have even just an intuition that something is different, reach out to your adjustment counselor. So if you want to, I can connect with you kind of offline and let you get you to figure out which school you're in and who, what contact information you need to get. We need to get you. But yeah, I would just even just having a conversation with them yourself, you can tell your story and a little bit about your student and they will be able to help guide you of, okay, let's see what you're going through and let's work on some action steps that are next for you. That makes sense for your particular situation.
Thanks. I really appreciate it. I'm sure I'm not alone. It's, it's a heartbreaking thing to, to see happening.
Absolutely. And we feel for you.
Okay, next we have Kristen Bull.
Hi, Kristen Bull, Volunteer Road. Sarah, I'm sorry, my heart breaks for you. And I think a lot of these people on this Zoom has have heard my voice before, and I think this is the one my, it's the thing that I've been so concerned about. And just because I'm concerned about it doesn't mean that you're not. And I want to make that clear. I know everybody, everybody is, but I, I know that we can do more and do better for our kids. And so it's nice to hear this presentation, Heather, of what we've done and, and what we're doing. But these situations are very real for people at home. And I think the op ed that I had posted, I had, there's obviously, you know, anytime you put yourself out there, as you all know, there's obviously comments that are positive and negative, but mostly what I received was people just really saying like I, you know, situations with their child, just like Sarah saying, and we don't, I don't know what to do. I feel helpless. I feel like I can't speak out because I don't want my child to be, people know who I am and they know who my child is and you know. And then, you know, it's just hard at my job seeing what I'm seeing. And it's, it's just hard to sit here and I don't, I don't, you know, it's children, so I don't see COVID, but I'm seeing, you know, children in there for in an intensive care unit for issues that they really shouldn't be in an intensive care unit for. It's stuff that we can prevent. And so anyway, so I'm just stating this again, and just because I have an opinion, doesn't mean that I think that you guys aren't doing your job. I just, again, I think we need to, to put our kids first. And the other thing I want to say, Heather, is I understand like you're doing the like surveying and, and the different surveys and stuff, but like, for example, with my child in particular, I had mentioned some things that were going on at home and my teacher's jaw dropped and she was like, your child? Like, that doesn't seem in line with your child. And, and I could understand why she wouldn't know that. It's because she sees my child just for a short period of time, but there's three days that my child's at home. And so there's a lot of behaviors that happen at home that don't happen in school. And so I'm just wondering if there's a way that we can survey the parents more because it's hard for parents to speak up. Like, we're also just like everybody else. We're just like putting our head down and trying to do the best we can. But maybe if there's something like extended out to parents saying like, hey, what's going on at your house? Like, how can we help? What can we do? Here are some resources and and maybe that might have, give more parents a voice to speak up, you know, on a which, which is more private than something like this. So we can help prevent some situations from occurring. So that's just a suggestion I have. I also just wanted to say on a side note, I'm, I really appreciate the transparency more in the beginning of this presentation and just learning about everything that you guys have done and what we are planning to do. So thank you.
Thank you. That's good feedback and we will absolutely take it to heart and see if, you know, we we, as I know, day to day, we're constantly, sorry, I think I keep touching my microphone and making bad noises, but we are constantly talking to parents about specific kids. And so we, I mean, we can do outreach, but I also want parents to feel free to, even if it's to me because they don't know, and this happened earlier this year, to reach out to me saying, I have a concern about my kid, but I'm not exactly sure who the first person is to go to because they don't want to maybe signal something to their classroom teacher. But I can help connect to resources. The school counselors can help connect to resources and it is, we do want it to be confidential and private and have those concerns addressed immediately without having to wait for any, you know, survey or formal things. Obviously, I, I hear what you're saying about maybe doing a little more general surveying from parents' perspective that can get us more information in a global sense as well.
Yeah. Well, maybe like Dr. Austin, one of the next emails you send out, maybe there can be some links again to everybody just reminding people their resources and I mean, it's like, it really is, this is a crisis as well. And I think it's so, it's really hard. I mean, it's hard to watch people with COVID. I've, I've seen that, like, I, you know, but I find this really hard when there's children you know, in, in a hospital setting with, with stuff that could have been prevented. So and at any rate, I think that maybe if you can disseminate some information, like, I mean, this is great. Like you just did this presentation, but half of the people weren't on it anymore. And, you know, because this has gotten to be a very long thing and as they always are for you guys, but I think, you know, maybe some, the email that Dr. Austin sends, it goes to everybody. And so maybe that's just a good reminder for people. You know, just to touch base if they do have concerns, so.
Good idea. Thank you.
Will this be on the website, this presentation on either on the counseling page or the district site?
I can absolutely put it on the counseling site. I don't have control over the district site, but yes, I know people who do. So.
Okay.
So do I, Heather. I think we can make it happen.
The other thing I would just would like to mention is there, there is a comprehensive social emotional wellness resource page on our main landing web, on the website of all the district and all six schools that the counseling department has been curating and keeping up to date. So I just would put that out there as well. And maybe and Dr. Austin's as communication, at Kristen's point, we can direct people back to that resource. There's tons of resources there, articles, links to supports and and it is curated and kept up to date by the counseling department. But to draw people's attention to it is a fair point. So we can work on that.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's the thing, like you're just, like, we're literally just surviving every day. That you, I don't have time to sit and like go through all the websites to sort of, so if it's just there in front of you. You know, I think it's just a good reminder and maybe something that's sent out like, you know, quarterly, just to remind people like, hey, your mental health is important to us. Like, you know, touch base with us if there's concerns about your child.
Right. And even if it's just a link in a newsletter or something, just a reminder. So it's constantly forefront. Yep.
Great. Thank you.
Carrie, yeah, Heather, maybe, thank you for the presentation and thank you, parents for bearing your souls. We really, it's hard. But as to, you know, Sarah's didn't know where to go, maybe you could have the adjustment counselor at each school, send it, send this presentation and follow up to their schools. So then people actually know who the person is. Because it's also the case that you don't, if you've never had a need, you wouldn't know who the adjustment counselor is. I had an experience a couple of years ago of a traumatic experience our family went through and I didn't know where to go and somebody suggested go talk to the adjustment counselor and I did, and it had nothing to do with what was going on in school, but it was really helpful. So I, you know, people don't realize that resource is available, but they don't even know the name of the person. So I think if it came from them, that would create that more personal connection and outreach. So as what Kristen had suggested, I think the pushing out of information is really helpful at times like this.
I mean, maybe even just this, the adjustment counselor, like popping in on the class zooms, you know, or just doing something so that their, their face is there and kids like, even kids can reach out to them on the side. You know, I, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sure everybody's so tired, but obviously this is something that I feel passionate about and I just don't want to be taking care of children in our community.
Right. And that's, I mean, that's what, that is happening. Adjustment counselors are visible in the schools. They do some lessons as well where they're, and they always have. So, but yes, it's important now and we will make more explicit connections. Absolutely.
Thank you. Tara Healy. You're going to mute yourself and state your name and address.
Sure. Tara Healy, nineteen How Street. Heather, thank you so much for that presentation. It was very illuminating to me. Some things you spoke of, I wasn't aware of, and I think to Kristen's point, getting some more information out there to the community about what resources are available and to make them feel comfortable that kind of no issue is, is too small to raise because those resources are there to assist everyone would certainly be helpful. My question is with regard to whether or not any of the information you've collected, either through surveys or through communications from parents requesting assistance over the last few months is available in the aggregate such that it can be used by the administration, the committee, the Hingham Education Association and others to inform their decision making. And, and it just kind of struck me looking kind of thinking over the going back to school plan in, in January and February. It, it seems to have an almost one dimensional reliance on COVID only statistics, the gray green. But there's so many other factors that, that, that seem to be at play here and, and we seem to be approaching it from a vantage of going back to school is risky. So we have to be safe before we can send the kids back. But, but if we were to kind of look at this from the vantage of, you know, keeping kids out of school is, is risky. We, we might be tracking a whole, a whole lot of metrics in addition to just the COVID statistics. Chief among them being the, the social emotional health of, of the students and, and the families and the teachers, everybody in the community. And, and when we see these presentations, we see the COVID statistics, but, but we're not seeing the statistics about the social emotional health and and clearly some surveying has been done. And to Kristen's point, maybe, maybe more canon and should be done to see how things are tracking. But, but I would love to see, you know, those statistics as well to include economic security or insecurity with families who are, you know, dealing with a lot of increasing costs, decisions about maybe exiting the workforce or being unable to enter the workforce because they're homeschooling their children. All these factors, I think, come to play and, and should come to play in making decisions about sending the kids back to school because it could well be that some of the social and emotional considerations or economic insecurities that families are faced with may in some cases outweigh some of the COVID risk. But if we're not tracking those things and talking about those things, then, you know, to my other point, it, it seems somewhat one dimensional that we're relying exclusively on the gray green coding to make these decisions about when we can send the kids back. And I, and I realize not everything can be tracked as easily. You know, the gray green, those types of coatings are, are easy for us to track. And so we may have a tendency to fall back on them exclusively, but there's so many other important factors. And even if it's somewhat nuanced and, and, and the way that we factor them into the decision making, it would be great to get some visibility on that. And, and if nothing else, it less, if we could survey a little bit more and get some more information from the parents, I think there would be a sense in the community that we're, we're listening and, and factoring in more things than just these, these COVID statistics. So I guess back to my original question is to you, Heather, and then I guess there's some, some broader issues. Are, are we able to look at any of this information in the aggregate? Or to start doing so?
Yes, we can with a universal screening, especially at the elementary level, where it's been going on a little bit longer than the secondary. We had more of a phased in roll in process with that, but we do have year over year data. And so once that screening is complete, we will be able to compare to see where, you know, obviously whenever those those screeners are used as a snapshot in time, so that doesn't indicate the functioning of a student over an entire school year. But we can compare a snapshot to snapshot and see if there are differences. And we certainly do. Counselors are constantly talking to administrators about what we're finding in our work and advocating for supports. So for that piece.
And just to, just to piggyback on Heather, hi, this is Jamie. I'm the assistant superintendent. In January, we are going to be, my office will be launching a comprehensive data analysis to actually address some of the very issues you're bringing up, not only relative to social emotional, but also to explore the academic impact the shutdown on our students' performance by looking at year over year data and running comparative analysis between sort of remedian points or whether there's significant differences, looking at sort of basic T tests really to figure out if the means are different between the two populations to sort of see whether we're seeing higher rates of kids or not at benchmark relative to reading and writing skills and social emotional learning to Heather's point is wrapped up into that analysis. So hopefully by sort of early winter, we'll have hopefully have better visibility relative to the, the impact of COVID nineteen. Dr. Austin and I were discussing that just a couple of weeks ago, relative to the budget request that we're preparing to put forward to address some of the academic impacts and the social emotional impact. So to your question, probably by mid February, early March, we hope to have that analysis completed. But that will really kick off in January, once the second rounds of screenings are done.
Hey, thank you. I'm not seeing any other hands. So I just want to thank you again, Heather, for that great presentation and, and for, for listening and, and for putting out these resources to the community. I think that's going to be really helpful for a lot of families.
Carrie, do you mind if I just, just, just a thank you to Heather as well, because I'd asked Heather to come in and do that today. So thank you so much. Thank you to all the counseling department. You guys do an amazing job. And much, very much appreciated. I think it's the, the work that's not always seen by everyone underneath the scenes, but we're very proud of all of you and, and the efforts that you make. And, and thank you for that. I've seen in certainly my lifetime, how we've changed from a guidance counseling department to a counseling department. And we continue to evolve. And, and so the issues that Kristen bring up, very important as we continue to evolve and, and work on children's mental health is part of our, our school program. So thank you. Thank to all of you, the, the counseling department. You do amazing work and very much appreciated. Thank you.
Great. Thanks. Okay. Ten point two is to review proposed sections DGHI and L of the Hingham Public Schools Policy Manual and act as appropriate. We won't be voting on this tonight, actually, because it's a first read. So we have several sections. So, um, we have several sections of this policy manual on the agenda. For anyone new to the school committee meetings, over the past year, we've been reviewing our policy manual to make sure that we have all of the legally required policies, as well as those that request uh, that reflect best practices. Um, our current policy is to do at least two reads of any proposed policy changes to give the committee members a chance to fully consider the proposed changes. As with the other sections, we have reviewed reviewed this year, the policy subcommittee reviewed the Massachusetts Association of School Committees or MASC templates for these sections, along with the Hingham policies, uh, when we have them. Dr. Austin participates in these discussions, and Susan Demato does for some of them as well. Um, then the policies are shared with the appropriate administrator or administrators and the HEA for input. One thing I wanted to note is that while we have section I, which covers instruction on the agenda for tonight, the HEA has not had a chance to review it. So the policy subcommittee would like to table that for now and bring it to the January eleventh meeting for our first read. Um, Dr. Austin's shared all of the proposed policies with the HEA, so we welcome any feedback on the other sections if they'd like to provide it too. So the first one is policy section D, which is fiscal management. This section covers fiscal management goals, the budget process, fiscal accounting and reporting, revolving funds and purchasing, among other topics. Uh, Dr. Austin shared this with John Ferris. Um, policy section G covers personnel. These policy, um, the these policies cover policy goals, staff ethics, including conflict of interest, staff conduct, gifts, online fundraising, raising, staff complaints and grievances, and hiring policies, among other sections. And Susan Demato, our human resources director, participated in that meeting and gave feedback on these policies. We did, as part of that discussion, discuss how the equity initiative will impact, um, the har- hiring policies. Um, and how, whether we should change it to reflect that. Um, and we made a few tweaks to it to do that, but um, Dr. Austin recommended revisiting the hiring policies once all of the equity audit work had been done. Um, and so probably in the next year or so. Um, policy section H, because it covers negotiations. Um, we would note that this, um, the committee recently adopted these negotiation policies, so any changes to this one are very minor. It's mostly wordsmithing. Um, and then finally, policy section L covers the education agency relations, race, relations. Sorry, it's late. This is a short section, and it covers the Hingham Public Schools' relationships with other schools and districts, including the Selshur Educational Collaborative and private schools located in Hingham. Does anyone have any questions or comments on any of these sections? Okay, I'm not seeing any. So we will plan to hopefully bring them back on the eleventh, and we'll bring I for our first read on that day too. And I just wanna thank Liza and Libby for all of their work on this. It's it's not the most exciting work, but it's it's important. Um, ten point three is to receive notification of the resignation of Mary Ann Gates, Executive Assistant to the Superintendent and Recording Secretary to the School Committee, effective, uh, December fourteenth, twenty twenty. And we wish her the best in her future endeavors. And, um, Dr. Austin has said that we have advertised for a replacement. Julie O'Halloran has graciously agreed to stay on during the search, so we really appreciate that. Um, eleven is subcommittee and project reports. We'll go alphabetically, Michelle.
I don't have anything.
Okay. Jen?
Um, I just have, um, Buster's School Council will be meeting on January sixth. I'll be attending that.
Great, thank you. Aness?
Hi, uh, yes, we had a finance subcommittee meeting on December eighth. Um, we started talking about the fiscal twenty-two, um, which the full committee will start diving into in January, much of what, um, Mr. Ferris has already talked about. Um, we chatted about the impact of the full day kindergarten and KIA and lunch, um, food services. Um, the impact to revolving accounts and what that looks like going forward. Um, the bus leases are coming up, so, uh, John and his team are working on getting prices for the new leases. And then included in your packet, there are three warrants. And in addition to what I signed there, there was payroll this time around, which doesn't make it into the um, into your packet, but they're, they're simply just payroll. The Equity Task Force, uh, uh, Dr. Jamie and I attended the remaining PTO meetings to introduce the Equity Task Force Plan. We did PRS East and Hingham Middle School. And that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Carlos? You're muted, Carlos.
Thank you. We had a very productive, uh, capital and facilities meeting on December eighth. We review I, the line items on the capital, uh, budget. You know, totaling totaling, uh, five point nine million dollars, including uh, the window at PIS that we all heard the good news tonight, that we have been invited to the accelerated repairs. So that will help, uh, very much so, uh, with that amount bringing down. Uh, but essentially, without that, we are looking, uh, to get from capital outlay, uh, two point five, two point four million dollars, which includes, uh, one oh five for the three buses that we hope to purchase, uh, that they lease us up. So by purchasing those used buses, we can have, uh, spare buses, uh, to, you know, bring us to the schools. Um, we do hope that, uh, the uh, financial subcommittee, uh, will, uh, explore, uh, the possibility this time of, uh, definitely addressing the technology, uh, piece of it. Uh, we have been talking about, uh, removing technology from the capital, uh, uh, budget for several years. Uh, due to the fact that, uh, it gave, it it's about four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, by moving that from the capital to the operating budget, that will, uh, free up some money where we can do some more, um, you know, capital projects and, uh, you know, uh, prevent preventive, uh, maintenance in our schools. Uh, so that's that. Um, we did ha- receive a visit, uh, under forty-eight hours from representative from the net net, uh, net zero, um, committee, uh, that we, which we voted to be part of it. Uh, they heard about, you know, our ideas about, you know, trying to put a canopy over the high school walkway. Uh, not only that, they have ideas of starting our our properties, uh, to see the possibility of putting solar power canopy, canopies. Uh, and they would work with the, uh, light plant to sort of like, you know, pay for the consultant to do the study. So the subcommittee, uh, you know, embraced that and, uh, are willing to work with them uh, to, you know, to hopefully get that consultant to come up with the study. If that does happen, we'll bring to the full school committee, uh, you know, for further, uh, action. And that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. Libby?
Uh, yeah, so, um, this will be news to my, uh, community outreach meeting members. Uh, I got confirmation today from the senior center that we have Dr. Austin scheduled for coffee uh, there, uh, on Zoom wise, on February tenth at one thirty. Uh, so that would be an opportunity for the seniors involved in the senior center to ask Dr. Austin questions and learn about what it's like to be in school today. And what we can expect in the future. Uh, I am still hitting up against some, uh, brick walls, trying to get into London Park. So, trying to make that happen and, uh, that's all I've got for now.
Thank you, Libby. Liza?
Um, just one thing, the master plan committee is meeting January sixth to um, do some final overview of the whole plan, and then February first, it's due to be presented to the planning board. So, um, I'll be reading over the vacation. But that's it.
Great, thank you. Um, one thing, Michelle, did you want to schedule a meeting to view the Metco film?
Yes, um, I do. Um, Carrie and I talked about it, and, because I really do think that the, um, the committee and the community would benefit from watching a twenty-five minute Metco film. But knowing twenty-five minutes is rather a long time to sit in a full school committee meeting, watching a movie. So I didn't, I was, and plus, January is busy, right, with, um, regular school committee meetings and budget meetings. So, I didn't know if folks were interested in doing it sort of, um, outside of our regular school committee meetings, um, and just, you know, picking a Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday to, um, to sort of view it together and then have a convo, you know, and then just have a conversation about it. So, um, maybe members of the administration have already seen it, can cannot participate, so I know they have so much to do that month. So I just wanted to get people's thoughts on that. Doing it just sort of as more of a school committee forum with the community.
Yeah, it's it's a really cool movie, because it's put together by Metco students, and they narrate it too. So it's it's really, and it's thought, it's thought provoking. They did all the research, they they they, uh, they narrated and, um, helped with the production, so.
When it, when was this movie made? I think I saw it. There are alumni involved as well?
Um.
Were that a new one?
I think it's a new one.
Yeah, it's a new one. I think they made, I think it was made, it was made last year, because they were supposed to, um, go around the neighborhoods interviewing people, but they had to do it, um, a little bit differently. Yeah, because of the pandemic. Um, what about? So, sorry, um, I'm just looking at my calendar for January. Um, is like a Tuesday night good, Wednesday night? What do people think?
You know, we could, we could just put together a doodle, since it's just scheduling. On the committee, it was good with doing it that way.
I will send one around. Um, is that okay with you, Carrie?
Yep, perfect.
Okay.
All right, great. And then I only had one thing. Um, so for a snap, the special needs athletic partnership. Um, going through the very first ever Reeds Across America event at the High Street Cemetery on Saturday. Um, this is a program that started at the Arlington National Cemetery to lay wreaths on the graves of fallen soldiers to honor their service. Um, a call went out to the SNAP community, to coaches, families and mentors, and within twenty-four hours, all the volunteer spots were full. Um, so my boys and I participated, and it was a really beautiful morning. So I just wanted to thank Tom Hoffman and Keith German for organizing it. Um, so, with that.
Just one more thing.
Yeah.
Just wanna remind everyone that, uh, Capro and Facilities is meeting tomorrow at five PM. And the notice is posted on the website. Thank you.
Does anyone have anything for forty-eight hours? Okay, see nothing. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Michelle.
Uh, me, Libby.
Thanks, Libby. Okay, uh, roll call.
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Ness?
Hi.
Carlos?
Hi.
Libby?
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Thank you, everyone, and happy holidays. We'll see you in the new year.
Happy holidays.
Yes, happy holidays, everyone.
Happy, healthy holidays.
Merry Christmas.